Welcome. As the Chair of this meeting, I need to confirm that all members and persons anticipated on the agenda are present and can hear me. School committee members, when I call your name, please respond on the affirmative. Um, Mauro?
Yes.
Natasha?
I don't think she can hear us. I think she's having video, audio difficulty now.
Okay, Mary?
Yes.
Elizabeth?
Yes.
Natasha?
I can't hear, sorry, I gotta.
Okay.
I'll be back, bye.
Um, staff, when I call your name, please respond on the affirmative. Colleen Andrade?
Here.
Jeff Frante?
Here.
Um, Charles Gabron?
Here.
Brian Haas?
Here.
Wayne White?
Here.
And Chuck Kierdinas?
Here.
Thank you. Hello, everyone. Um, this open meeting of the Maynard School Committee is being conducted remotely as allowed by Act Governor Baker signed into law on July 16th, um, 2022, extending certain pandemic-related policy measures. This bill authorized the continuation of remote meetings in public access under the open meeting law and other remote meeting provisions until March 31st, 2023. This committee is convening by Zoom as posted on the district's website. Please note that this meeting is being recorded. Accordingly, be aware that other folks may be able to see you and take care enough to screen share your computer. Anything that you broadcast may be captured by the recording, which is audible to and viewable by the public. Additionally, please use the raise your hand function to let the Chair know if you are planning to record or broadcast this meeting. Most of the supporting materials that have been provided for the members of this body are available on the Maynard Public Schools website in a folder titled 2022-2023 Agendas under the tab, agendas, under the tab, School Committee. The public is encouraged to follow along using the posted agenda and documents unless the Chair notes otherwise. Any citizen wishing to make a comment to be read during a virtual meeting entered into the public record may do so by emailing comments to commentsforscmeeting@maynard.k12.us. Comments need to be emailed in advance and will be received up until the public comment agenda item is addressed. Please include public comment in the subject line and your full name and street address in the body of your email. Emails without this information cannot be read. Statements longer than 350 words may be cut short at the three-minute mark to ensure that everyone has the opportunity to be heard or will be submitted in their entirety for the public record. The Chair will read only one statement from each individual. However, additional comments may be submitted for the public record by providing a copy to the Chair via email up until the end of the meeting explicitly stating their desire to have these additional comments included in the public record. Please be aware that the purpose of the public comments period is a devoted time for the school committee to hear from the community it serves. As such, the protocol supports the unidirectional public sharing of public comments rather than a bidirectional conversation. Before we go to the first item on the agenda, permit me to cover some ground rules for effective and clear conduct of our business and ensure accurate meeting minutes. I will introduce each speaker on the agenda. After they conclude their remarks, I will ask each member if they have any comments, questions, or motions that they would like to make. I will go through the members for additional comments or questions if time allows. Please hold, please hold off on speaking until your name is called and remember to speak clearly and in a way that helps generate accurate meeting minutes. If members wish to engage with other members, please do so through the Chair and take care not to interrupt anyone who is speaking. Finally, each vote taken in this meeting will be conducted by a roll call vote. So roll calls are come to order. Mauro?
Yes.
Mary?
Yes.
Elizabeth?
Yes.
We don't have Natasha and I'm a yes. Okay. Um, so citizens' comments? Other citizens? Um, is there urgent business?
No urgent business tonight.
All right, thank you. Um, okay, Superintendent's Annual Performance Review. Um, Elizabeth, do you want to pick that up and sort of update where things are at with that?
Um, yeah, can you hear me?
Yep.
Okay, and sorry, you won't be able to see me tonight if you're watching. I don't know what's going on with my camera. Um, okay, so after our meeting where we looked at the draft last time, last month, I got some, we did some, if you watched the last meeting, you know, we did some revision in real time. Um, and then people sent me any revisions they had to the scoring. Um, and so as a result of that work and some other feedback about how to format it so it's easier to read. So for example, not having the columns be side-to-side columns, but it said to be one on top of the other in each of the categories. In light of that feedback and some feedback about bullet points, I just went through and made the edits to the, to the scores and to the formatting, so that hopefully it's readable now, hopefully it feels accurate now, and also as detailed as we need it to be for this purpose. Um, I did, I highlighted for the, for the most part, the things that are different are in bold.
Um, okay, um, so do we want to vote on this or do we need? You need to do this, Mike?
Do we, do we? Sorry, do we still have, we still don't have Natasha here?
No.
My thought, my thought was that at this point, it's more like, uh, if there are any things that where you think that still doesn't make sense or it's still missing something or it's still inaccurate, or we have any questions, this would be the time for it, but otherwise it seems like it goes to a vote.
I'm ready to vote on it.
I'm ready to vote on it. Um, do we need to share anything about the ratings publicly?
Well, they're on, they're in the folder, right? Colleen?
They're in the folder. I did not see the video of the email till much later today. Um, it was super busy at work, so it did not go out to the public. We can always share it if you wanted. I have it up, ready to share if you wanted to share it.
Um, do you want to just share it in like those final ratings on like the first and second page and then we can vote on it?
Sure.
Ready to share, here we go. On the right one.
It's the one called reformatted and updated.
There it is. Got a lot of windows on, ready to share. All right. So which page should you want me to show?
So that'd be like the, the first page and a little bit of the second page.
Right. Like that.
There's a little bit of movement, um, on some of the goals and, um, and the overall score has been updated at the end of cycle summative evaluation report underneath that on the second page.
Yeah, that's there, right?
Yep.
Yep. Um, Natasha, we were just, um, Elizabeth updated about the edits she made and we're looking at the first two pages for the ratings. Um, and then if nobody has any issues or questions, um, I think we're ready to vote.
Yeah, Colleen, if you, if you go up.
Go up.
Yeah, there you go. So that's right there, or is this a three, that's, that's a change, right, that, that where that X is placed has gone up a bit. Um, and then, and then I think one, one of the standards also changed. It's too proficient from needs improvement. Um, and then up to the goals, I think one of the goals of the second, the first goal went up a bit.
Can you go up a little bit more?
Yeah. I see it.
Yeah.
So there's the two, the significant progress. Okay, yeah. And I had, I looked at it earlier, so, um, I was fine. Was this, is this something that I just want to make sure I know, um, is posted, was, I know was kind of added this minute to the, um, packet. I'm sorry if I missed that.
I did not, I did not see it till very late this afternoon.
Yeah.
Uh, it will go on the website, though.
Okay.
If this is what's finally in, voted on.
Um, can we? Can we, this is just a nitpick and this is where it says page one of nine, it's actually page one of 12.
Let's see where that is.
So before it gets posted, that needs to change.
Yeah, this is the, yeah, sure, it's the footer. I'm not sure, can I change it? Let's see.
You have to double-click on that.
Yeah, let's see, let's see if it works. I put it on mine and now they're all 12. Okay, that should work. For you too.
All the pages need to be changed, though.
It's just the first one and then it does automatically does the others, you see?
Okay.
Oh, good. Great. Thank you.
Someone want to make a motion?
I'll make a motion that we approve, um, the edited final version for Brian Haas's superintendent evaluation for FY, FY 22.
I have a second.
Okay, discussion? Okay, we will call vote Mauro?
Yes.
Mary?
Yes.
Natasha?
Yes.
Elizabeth?
Yes.
And I'm a yes.
Okay.
Okay, thanks, guys. Sorry, that was, ended up being a kind of complicated process, but hopefully, um, we'll do a better job staying on top of it and, um, getting feedback, um, from folks earlier on for this coming year.
And Hillary, just to, um, add, I, I think there was, um, from what I've heard, an appreciation, because I don't, that, that some level of review happened during the meeting, so maybe not necessarily to the extent we did this time next year, but I do think that there was an appreciation to go through, like for the public or the staff that joined or any, any folks who look back. Um, so just to think about for planning for next year, that I want to make sure that the discussion on, uh, it still does some level of discussion of, of how we get and if we need to edit does happen during the meeting.
Yeah, I think, yeah, I just think we aim for still being transparent, but maybe more streamlined.
Yeah.
And just as an overall, um, I, I really liked the editing that we did and I think it helps us as well as you, Brian, to going forward. I think it's gonna really help jumpstart a really productive year. So, um, it kind of, by the, doing the editing, it really showed how much work you have done. And, um, so really looking forward to this, to a really, really good year.
Yep.
Yeah, yeah. So thank everybody too for, for their thoughtfulness and trying to share. It helps me a lot as well. I just will say, I apologize, um, I'm working off of two computers here. So if I'm looking over this way, it's just another screen, so, um, sorry.
And that, that, I'm actually invisible, so don't even worry about it.
Oh, okay, so we have the invisible woman and the person with two, two heads, right?
I have two screens too, so.
Okay.
Next, activity fees, right?
Yep. So Brian, do you want to summarize where that's at?
Yeah, um, actually, Colleen, if you can share the memo, which kind of just has it in straight English for us all.
I can.
Perfect. So just while she's pulling that up, I just want you to know, we really have heard this, the school committee in their desire to sort of take a hard look at activity fees and athletic fees. For us, we call them um, activity fees and to see what possibilities do we have, although we've done the budget several months ago with the understanding that we really probably were going to keep things the same this year, just not really knowing where everything was at with COVID, but we took another look at that, um, and, and really tried to put ourselves in the parent's shoes of whether we're a child, a parent of a child who's only in, say, seventh or eighth grade and may only play one sport and may only have access to one sport versus a parent of a child who's in high school and may play a, a sport per season. So they may play three sports. Um, and originally, the fee was the same, so it was just a straight $400. Um, we're not in a position to eliminate the fees, that's just not within our financial capability. At this point, we're always looking to reduce the fee for families. So what we're proposing at this point is if you're a high school student, first child, keep it at 400, additional children would be 200. But if you're a Fowler student, we would reduce that first child to 200 and the other children to 100. Um, and then some additional information about families that meet the federal income guidelines, they're even lower for a high school. Student would be 100 hours for the first child and 50 for other children and 75 for the first child for a Fowler and 3750 for additional children at Fowler. And the caveat to this whole, um, if you can scroll up, uh, the caveat is that no student will not play due to financial hardship. So, and this has already started to happen toward the end of summer, whether a parent reaches out to the athletic director, the principal, the coach, whoever they're most comfortable with, just to say, hey, you know what, it's been a tough year, we need some help. Um, we don't ask a lot of questions on that. Quite frankly, we want students actively engaged, whether it's in programming or it's in athletics or it's in an activity, um, and we help support that. So the recommendation this year is the numbers you're looking at on the screen now. And if Colleen goes, I don't know if it's the next page or the next document, I think it's the next document, which sort of shows the redline version of what was, we can come back to this in a moment. Or if you want to just, yeah, that's the redline version of the document that we had in place, um, with the changes so that it's um, just shows what I, on a clean version, what it looks like. Um, this is the older version.
Brian, can I just ask? Spanish club and drama and such, because those are free now, or what's, what's?
So I think there's a lot of just misinformation that a lot of these things people didn't pay for, they just participated in. And there were a few clubs that students did in fact pay for to be part of, but very few. So this is, um, our first attempt at really cleaning up the pieces that we know students didn't pay for Spanish club or drama, for example. Yeah, Mary, I know you had a question.
Yeah, I just, I had a question about Fowler. So at the high school, you list all the athletics, but at Fowler, could you expand on that also and add those to the list so people know what they're paying for, for the?
Sure, yeah, I'll work with Mike to identify exactly what athletic teams they're allowed to participate on.
And Mary, I, I will say just from, um, sometimes sixth grade can and sometimes sixth grade can't participate because it depends on, like, how many students in seventh and eighth grades, like this year, typically sixth grade doesn't, but they usually have to see how many interested are seventh and eighth. And so it might be that, I think, I, I did see the fee that they included it. So I, I understood that to be like, when they are able to, this is what it is, right? But it doesn't autom, I think it's just a matter of how many, um, they need to try out for or if they're even able to open it up to sixth grade. That always doesn't happen.
And sometimes I, I believe, but I will check with the athletic director. It depends on the particular sport. Um, sometimes if it's a high contact sport, they don't necessarily want to put a sixth grader on the field with a 12th grader.
Well, some of, some of them go like eighth grade sometimes needs to go to JV, so they bump them up, that's that trickle-down effect.
So the, um, interesting thought is that, and Colleen remembers this, so the Fowler six through eight used to be 200 and 100 and there was one year that we were on the verge of having to do away with, um, Fowler sports, because it was a really bad budget year. And so that's when the parent said, just bring it up to what the high school is. So now we're bringing it back down. So that's good that we can do that. Um, my other, I also had a clerical error, because on the question and answer guide, um, for activity fees, it says when a payment's due, it says April 12th to 2016.
We'll fix that, yeah.
Yeah, that was an easy.
Saw that late, but thank you. I appreciate that. Thanks, Colleen, for showing that. Hopefully, the school committee's in favor of bringing those fees back in line to what they were um, several years ago. Um, and Wayne, our Wayne White Business Manager is in support of this as well, so we have the capacity to do this this year. And we, one of the things we will do this year, now that we have a full-time athletic director and speaking with Mike, um, is really track very carefully who participates in what sport, how many students are from Fowler, how many students are high school? Are they participating in an activity, in a sport? If so, what activity, what sport, multiples? And really have some solid data to compare to this chart and see how much revenue are we bringing in this way. Um, it's been, you know, in the last couple of years.
Other questions, I don't know.
Go ahead.
Now would be a good time. So, um, I was looking at that presentation, thank you so much for that data collection to do that comparison, that really was helpful. And I did see how over the years, you know, from
Yeah.
17, was it 18, you know, and it could see where the COVID impact really was for, for there. So are we thinking that for FY 23, are we budgeted similar to what FY 19 maybe was? Is that what we are anticipating the expenses would be? And is it the 50%? Was it based on those pre-COVID numbers or was it, because it, there was some indication there that it was, um, maybe the next slide.
So this, okay, look.
Oh, yeah, exactly. Yeah, so it, exactly. So if we are, are we budgeted for FY 23? Um, for fee collection in the two FY 19 range or where, where are we budgeted for FY 23?
In conversations, yep, in conversations with Wayne, we've looked at and round numbers, 100,000, so the FY 2019 numbers, knowing that we were.
Uh-oh. That's not me, right? That's Brian?
No, that's Brian.
Okay.
Yeah, absorb that. If you want to speak to that, Wayne?
Yes. Yeah, we, we discussed, you know, around $100,000 in terms of both expenses and fees. Um, that, that was the case pre-pandemic in 18 and 19. And then assuming that things go back, um, we would, uh, break even in terms of what our expenses were and our costs. And so with the fee reduction, um, I anticipate that our revenues will drop a little bit. Um, I don't know if that would increase participation, that might offset it. But we, um, are in a financial position to kind of do this year as a pilot, to see how that works out.
Well, the other part to that, um, is thinking about, we, we talked about like how we're collecting money. And I know every school that I was able to see, they have an electronic means for, um, you know, paying online in some capacity where if some people can't pay, they could maybe use their credit card or whatever, you know, or however budgetary for their own family. They might, you know, so I, I, I wonder if that can also be part of what we're exploring this year is, um, allowing, because I think we would be able to capture the revenue faster when, you know, you register and then you say, here's the link, you know, because I know that Matt, uh, Mike put together a great online Google form for people to go in and do that registering, but it'd be, then you have to go do this other step of mailing a check, you know, a paper check and it just seems a little bit archaic. So I wonder if our, how our revenue would be also, um, improved if we had the opportunity to have them pay electronically right away, right, at the time that they register. So it's not like another step that might have to be like later. And also our staff, they don't have to send out bills or reminder. It just becomes part of the, you know, the, the initial process. So I, I, I don't know what, what, what apps might be best, but I know that every school that I've seen when I was looking at this has some form of, uh, electronic means to connect, to pay and collect money. Is that something that we are looking to do this year?
Yes, you must have been eavesdropping on our Zoom meetings, Natasha.
I was, was there. I was only, oh, no, that's fantastic. I, I, I'm, I'm excited to hear that. I think that will really help us do that historical collection a little, and then we can kind of say, okay, now people are able to pay easier. What does that bring in and, and, and are we still the same place for FY 19? A big, good comparison to look at.
Well, we won't be, uh, fully electronic right away. We just, um, Adam Steiner, myself, um, Colleen's been brought into the, the conversation along with Michael Ria uh, and the town treasurer, because we've attempted to do this before and the town has, uh, kind of thrown cold water on it.
They do now electronic collection for their services too. They actually transitioned over COVID for a lot of town fee collection. So I'm, I'm sure they wouldn't deny us the opportunity, the same.
Well, the previous administration did. Um, uh, Jen was on the call with us and she supported. So we're, uh, Adam is going to take the lead on it and we're going to pilot, um, using the, the IT, I believe the insurance fees uh, before we go larger to see how it goes and kind of work out some of the bugs. So we are moving in that direction.
Awesome. Thank you.
Can I say something about the electronic thing? Um, if possible, one thing that my daughter's school does that I love, and it would be awesome if the, whatever electronic um, mechanism we use can do, is when the kids get the letter qualifying them for free and reduced school lunch, it also gives them a code that they can enter when registering, um, for like drama or sports and stuff to account for the fees. So they don't have to go approach the coach or anything, it's all handled at that level electronically um, to just waive the fees at that stage, which is really cool.
Well, that's, that's the other part I was gonna, um, ask about is there is a way, because when they register, um, it's, it's really having to continuously identify that, you know, my family is of low mean, my family's of low means repeatedly. You know, I think is unnecessary. Uh, if we have the ability for them to, if they've applied for free and reduced lunch, is there an opportunity, whether Hillary's suggestion or them putting it with a checkbox on the, on the, the, the registration that, um, Mike sends out electronically so that he can consult with you, Wayne, you know, I, I've, I'm eligible so that they don't have to continuously identify, um, you know, whatever their circumstances, that they're of low means repeatedly to the district. I think it's, there's some, I don't know, some embarrassment, some maybe, some parents may feel or some families may feel, and I think it's something that we, we should be considerate of a little bit more um, in how we can operationally make it less cumbersome.
Is there a way that we can, um, somehow incorporate this into Aspen? Almost like, you know, your child has, is signed up for this athletic. Um, and this is how much the fee is and this is, you know, you're on free and reduced, um, lunch, so you, you know, you only pay this amount. And then also to show that they have paid, so that it's all in one spot. Having to do with the school, I, I don't know if that's something that Adam can incorporate or something.
Well, again, we're going to, we just had the conversation with, um, my school Bucks people. Um, so we're just going to pilot it and, um, also along, we want to make sure it works first. Um, you know, the worst thing we could do is roll this out and the next time I see you guys on a screen, you want to hang me because nothing works. Um, so we want to do that and all of your input and suggestions, um, you know, we can, um, actually Adam's going to take, take, take the lead on this because all those things you're talking about are on the backend, which is way out of my lane. Um, but I can certainly, you know, make him aware of what we're trying to do in terms of the front end and what, what's available to the user. So I will take, you know, your, your, um, your concerns and share them with Adam.
Put your hand up.
Colleen?
I assume, because I know how School Bucks works, we're still going to build people like we normally do. Um, it's not like any of that goes to Mike or the need to ask permission or what am I paying? So it's likely that, um, they will get the bill, they'll log in, they'll pay. Me will look at it from the business office, see what's been paid and then go from there.
I, I was going to ask something.
Hillary?
Hand up, so.
Okay, Brian?
I was just going to say, you, you brought up some really good points and I totally agree that having a family be able to identify once should be enough in the world that we live in in terms of the electronics and the interconnections between all the different portals and pieces we have. So we will, and I think I'm just reiterating what Wayne said, he heard, he heard you as well. And we will work with Adam and the, um, technology and the company to see, how do we do that? It can be done other places, do what I even made a note to reach out to the school that Hillary's daughter goes to just to say, so what do you do to make that happen? So it's an easy identify once and then it translates to all the other documents that it needs to. So I, as a parent, don't have to continuously raise my hand and acknowledge that. You know, we don't want to make it uncomfortable, we want to make it as easy as possible for parents, which then makes it as easy as possible for our students to participate. So, great suggestion, thank you.
I appreciate that. Elizabeth?
Yeah, I just wanted to say a couple of things. Thanks, first, first of all, for all of the changes you made on that form. A lot of them, they make a lot of sense and, um, I appreciate it. I think it makes a lot of sense that some things like the yearbook are not having, you know, costing $40 and that we are lowering the cost for them, for the Fowler. I love that it's going to be online and I'm just curious, I don't, I think I might have missed this, two things. One, um, is it, it doesn't say this on the sheet, but you are saying, I think I heard you say, that if someone is on free lunch, they will be able to play sports for free. That is correct?
So there's a sliding scale, if possible?
Mm-hmm.
So we really try and sort of approach it at, from a sliding scale perspective. If somebody has less than the full amount, but something that they're able to contribute and it's not putting them in a hardship, obviously that would be preferable because we, at the end of the day, need to cover the total expenses for all of the programming. If however, and I did say so, you did, I think this is what you heard, is the caveat is that I don't want any student not to participate because they can't pay.
Okay, that's, okay, good. And then, and the other question we have, sorry, is, um, all, I love all this electronic, um, news. Would that happen, do you think, at some point during this year, or are you thinking this is happening next year?
So sort of twofold, I think we're going to pilot it as, as Wayne was speaking, um, in terms of using it with our insurance for the Chromebooks to make sure that we have the infrastructure and it's working correctly. Um, because we don't want it to falter. And then if we can get that sort of up and running in the beginning of the year, I would think between Wayne and Adam and the other people supporting it, partway through the year, we could try, we, we may be able to try it with the athletics as the year goes on, not at the very beginning of the year, however.
So like maybe winter sports time?
That would be what I was thinking in my head. That would be what I was thinking in my head.
Okay, that makes a lot of sense. And then if that is the case, uh, I just want to point out that on the documents you gave us. The link to apply for, for a college scholarship just is very specific about Maynard High School. And I don't know if you want to change that.
Okay, yep.
So that it's like the kids in the, in Fowler can't apply, but maybe just, you know, make sure that that's inclusive enough that everyone knows they can apply. And if we could make, I mean, even, I don't know if this is possible in the beginning of the year, but even, even if you make that into a Google form. That might be better too than having it be something that people have to mail in, you know, before, before we get the code and all the other things, maybe by wintertime. Maybe just having that be a, a form now would be handy.
Okay, good suggestion. Thank you.
So um, Brian, just on the um, so the Hall of Fame Committee um is, we have a wonderful philanthropist. Who is going to be paying for scholarships for students that um are on free and reduced again, so that they can participate. But that is specifically for nine through twelve. So just so that, you know, and it is specifically for sports too. So um. Yeah, so we're gonna have to make up um the difference for the Fowler.
And we're prepared to do that.
Yeah. I had just one other question. Um, are parents ever allowed to do installments or is that just a nightmare? You know, through the year so that they don't have to come up with the full amount of money upfront?
I think it probably, to answer, it probably is a little bit of a challenge, but I would also say yes. And I'm saying that publicly because we now have a full-time athletic director to help us track these things. And if that makes it a more tenable arrangement for, you know, parents, I think we could, we could accommodate that.
Well, and that's where the electronic helps because I've heard parents in other places have been able to use their credit card, right? Because sometimes there have many kids and they, you know, have a credit card and so even though they pay interest, but it's, it just offers a little bit more flexibility. Um, that way, so um. That would be great. Brian, um, and you may have said this, Beth, were you, were you saying that the form should be a Google form for the?
The, the fee, okay. Yeah, would be nice. So that way it's not another thing to me. I think anytime you make people mail things in, or at least in my house, then it takes off. It, it sometimes is a.
It goes in a pile.
From happening in a timely manner. Yeah.
Yeah. I think I have seen that sometimes they have like a, and this might be an Aspen, but they do post, but I don't know where they're. Kind of Ma- Mauro was questioning. Um, Brian, is this something that we, or Mary, thinking that we could monitor like through the year in the Budget Subcommittee? Just as the, as it progresses and just getting, maybe get more updates there um. Of how maybe revenues are coming in or, or, you know, or not as it's being rolled out?
Yeah, that sounds like a great place to start the conversation, continue the conversation.
And then maybe have a, another presentation, maybe like in end of March or something while we're figuring out the budget to see what next year um would look like. To incorporate into the budget.
Agreed.
Um, so I really appreciate that we're looking into this and I know this was sprung on you because I thought we would just go forward with it until. The fall. Um, and I really appreciate that you looked into it and made some revisions. Um, personally, I still have a really big issue. I didn't realize prior to the last meeting. That we were speci- specifying that kids on free and reduced school lunch needed to pay a certain amount. Because I feel like that tells families, we've already accounted for your financial situation and we think this is what you should still be paying. And I feel like ethically for me, asking kids that can't afford food to pay a hundred dollars for sports. To participate in what other kids can participate at school is something I have a hard time with. And there's been probably ten or twelve community members who have said to me, how do you claim to care about diversity, equity and inclusion? And then tell kids aren't free to reduce school lunch, you can't afford food, but you need to pay a hundred dollars to play sports. So I, I'm okay going forward because I know you'll have enough votes for it, but I personally can't vote to charge people who can't afford food a hundred dollars. Um, so I just wanted to like give that heads up before we go forward, but I'm okay with going forward.
Brandon, do you say, because I see um their free reduced lunch, um, on one thing it says seventy-five dollars. Hold on.
One was for high school, one was for Fowler.
Right.
Okay. On the age of the student.
Right. So on the um, on the, on this, the PowerPoint, that it, it talked about um. It has grades, it's seven through eight, a hundred. Grade six seventy-five. On um, I just want to make sure I'm understanding on, I think it's page six, but on the sheet it says grade six through eight, seventy-five.
The existing form is what the presentation has.
The red line.
And the red line one would be the suggested changes.
Okay.
It is not approved yet.
Got it, got it. So what we would be saying, it would be seventy-five for grade six through eight. Um, for the first child and thirty, thirty-seven point five for additional children. And. Um, Brian, or maybe this might be a Wayne question. If that amount was zero, how much of an impact? Do we know how many right now uh free and reduced lunch kids participate? And if that, they did not pay anything, what type of budgetary impact that would have?
Great question. And I think we're gonna use, and I don't think, we're gonna use this year with Mike's, Mike Arias' support to really do a very careful tracking. Of who's doing what sport and activity. Because if we, to your point, it's a great question. If we could identify that number, we. Could have a slightly better sense of how much money will this come out of the operating budget? Now, we don't quite know that this year yet, but.
Right.
Keep in mind, the caveat is nobody will not be able to play. We've got that in our head. Wayne and I have made sure that we have enough that if a student can pay is, if their amount is zero. They'll still be able to pay, play, sorry.
Um, what exactly is, if you, you know, off the top of your head, what percentage of our students in, in our public schools in general are free reduced lunch kids?
Great question. I can look and get that to you tomorrow. I don't have it off the top of my head. I'm sorry.
Yeah, okay, yeah.
So I wonder if um, because we obviously can vote on this at any point if we wanted to. And because we don't have, it sounds like um. Free and reduced lunch may not be a significant. Population necessarily, or something that we've planned or impacted. I wonder if we could vote for those, that group to be zero. Um, it seems like you would be not charging them anyway. Um, if, if they would um not be able to pay. And so it would. It would be a cost that we would be eating anyway. So I'm just trying to understand the. Um, the benefit of advertising it as money when really, or costs, when really we're saying they wouldn't have to pay a cost if they. So I just, I just want to make, try to understand. It just seems a little bit like, you know, two part. And I get you're, we want to capture every dollar. That we, you know, we can to make the program sustainable. And so everyone's, so I get that part. But um, maybe this is something we can monitor in that if we feel like we're coming in under, like significantly under budget. Then we might be able to readdress it. But I wonder if going in with a more sensitive approach that we. We, that particular population is zero. Um, and maybe we can capture it with all the, with other areas for the year. In other means with, I don't know, revenue, other areas that we're um, Mike is working on.
So I guess the, oh, go ahead.
Sorry. I cut out for a little bit, but I think you were asking if we didn't charge kids on free reduced school lunch, anything, what the total cost would be to the district? And when I was trying to figure it out, looking at the ratio of kids in the district who'd get free reduced school lunch, it seemed like if the ratio pertained to kids playing sports. It would be about like twenty-five hundred to three thousand um for the year. Um, but that's like a big guess.
So going by, again, the Hall of Fame, and when we were talking about um picking up where remembering Maynard Zone left off. Um, it was about six to eight thousand dollars a year. For the scholarships and the scholarships that came in weren't necessarily for the full amount. In some cases, the parents were able to pay part of it um and, and get the, the rest of it done with scholarships. So that might give you an idea.
Thanks, Mary. So I think that's another part. Sometimes we just don't have that, you know, that data that we just have that tracking piece that I'm looking forward to hearing more about.
So Hillary, you know how many, what percentage of kids are free reduced lunch in Maynard?
I don't remember. I looked it up and was guessing. Um, but it was like a rough, yeah, it was just a guess based on the information I could find. Brian?
Yeah, I, I love the idea. I'm a little hesitant because I don't want to put us back into the situation where we're, we're significantly low in revenue. And then we have to say, well, for next year, we have to go back to four hundred across the board. So I prefer to recommend the slow, steady approach.
Okay.
And the evaluation at the same time. And if we get to a point even halfway through the year. Where we're feeling very confident and I work with Wayne and he says, we absolutely could modify this for the second half of the year. We could take that approach, but I'd like to get some hard data first.
So Brian, would we be able to then agree to this if we wanted to? I mean, I don't know. Um, you know, and I hear you because I don't want to, you know, get us to a place where we're, you know, in the red. Um, and then you have to cut programs or something to that effect. Um, would it be something that we can commit to saying we will before the FY, as we're discussing the FY twenty-four budget? That we will, because by then, by January, I'm guessing you should have some good data. To go by, the electronic program would have, you know, rolled out at some point or the means to collect. And then at that point, we commit to reevaluating um the possibility of lowering the fees even further. Um, to eliminate, is that something that, I don't know, Hillary, does that seem?
Yeah, I have on the rolling agenda for this year. Um, I had it for October, um, but we can move it to December or January too. Um, to make sure it's not forgotten to reassess for next year.
I'm comfortable with that approach.
I also think we, we should probably, can we make it clear that no one will be um not allowed to play a sport because of financial need? You know, if we make that very clear on the documents, that might be a way, I think, because I don't want it to be, you know. Sometimes situations like this end up being like, oh, there's a secret knowledge. There's a secret key. You just have to know someone who can tell you that actually you could play for free. But you'd have to have that like in to know. And I don't want to, I don't want to be a gatekeeper like that for kids. I'd rather have everybody know. That if you really can't, if this is something that's holding you back from playing a sport, don't let it because you can play. And it's not like a secret knowledge. It's, it's out there.
Well, that's why I was saying zero, because it seems like a placeholder, right? It just, but then, you know.
At least say, like, this is the numbers if you can. But of course, if you, if you, if you're gonna play football for us, great, do it. We'll, we'll help. You know, and not, and, and I think that, that would be clear, like no kid will be held back from participating in activities because of financial need. Would be something that would be nice to have on the form.
Yeah, because I think Hillary.
Okay.
Doesn't it say that on, on the form?
Does financial.
Number eight.
Is available. But it doesn't, but that, then it, it takes you to that form where you have the um, the scholarship for the high school.
I feel like people look at that chart for student activities fees. They see, you know, families that meet federal income guidelines. They think that applies to them. And then the next line or two lines down says your child will not be allowed to participate in any of the activities unless this fee is paid.
Right.
Like, if it were to say, you know, right under the chart, like, you know, no student will be turned away for an inability to pay, I'd be all for it. Um, but that's kind of like buried. Brian?
We could certainly revise that form. It's not etched in stone by any stretch and make it more clear. So that families know that. And, and to your point, if we put that line um that no student will be denied access to playing due to financial reasons. Higher up, bold, no problem.
And then take out that line about you can't play unless your fee is paid, you know?
Mm-hmm.
I mean, you have that fees are payable in full before the start of the activity. You already kind of are hinting you need to pay. But you don't want to say you cannot play because that sound, that'll be contradictory and scare people away.
And we do have somebody that can follow up with folks who haven't paid.
Yep, exactly.
Yep.
So it's probably less necessary to threaten people.
Right.
Are we, um, so are we, are we comfortable with approving the, or just making a motion and then we're committing to. Um, no later than January to reevaluate and we'll have the data. Um, Brian, you and Wayne and, and, and Mike will have data to provide to us to see if we have momentum to even, okay. All right, I'll make a motion that we um approve the recommended fees as for FY twenty-three. As provided. Do I need to list all the fees or no? No? Okay. Um. And we will be reevaluating the fees um in no later than January twenty twenty-three.
And can you add that it will say no child will be turned away for an inability to pay?
Say the same thing, yeah. Can you, can you add that to the motion?
Oh, oh, so um, okay, let me, my motion wasn't seconded. Let me take my motion back. And redo my motion. So we are saying that we accept, we approve the recommended. FY twenty-three fees as provided with the edits. Um, to include on the form that no child will be turned away for an inability to pay. Um, and committing to reevaluating the fees with more data provided to the school committee by January twenty twenty-three.
Second.
Yeah, well said.
Hey, discussion? Okay, we'll call Mauro.
Yes.
Mary?
Yes.
Natasha?
Yes.
Elizabeth?
Yes.
And I'll be a yes.
Thank you.
Okay, policy is under review. Um. Uh, Mauro, do you want to start with those?
Sure. How do, how, do, do we just want to go through each one or?
It'll be helpful for me because I don't under, I don't know where like what's been changed or discussed as a priority, so.
This is just the first run-through, right?
Yes.
Okay.
Okay, that's also good too. I know some of these, we, we had recently approved, so I was wondering.
Do you want to stop by explaining, Mauro?
Yeah, I'm just bringing it up. Um, let's see, the non-discrimination. Um, I don't.
And that is A C, right?
Yes.
Yes. So this. Is just the mask policy. Um. This is just the mask policy. Um, and we didn't really, other than like putting in the stuff in, the information about um. Maynard Public Schools is pretty much straight.
How does this compare to the one that, did we approve one? Um.
This, this, so basically what happened, what, what we had originally was just non-discrimination. This new one, well revised from mask, is non-discrimination, including harassment and retaliation. So it's.
It's got. Updated by mask in this past December.
Right.
So they changed it and um felt that these changes were important. And so we're updating ours similarly.
So I was just, I guess I was wondering, what is it difference for the one that we have, I guess? What, what parts jumped out is, is that?
So the difference is.
They have a red line? Do that, do they sometimes provide like a red line of?
They did not.
Um.
So the first. Part, the whole, the first two paragraphs are relatively the same. There's more information on the second, in the second paragraph. Um. And. The one through six are basically exactly the same. Some slight word changes.
I can see where those are kind of heightened, yeah.
There's some. Our original one had um. Had two paragraphs at the bottom similar to this one. Um, there was a much more information. Um. Not sure how to do this. Not sure how to do this, guys.
Yeah.
Um.
Would it help Natasha for you to pull up both documents between this meeting and the next meeting and compare them?
I, I did look at it, but I know, I, I know that we've done so many policies, so I wasn't sure if this was based on, because I know we, we did some other edits to some, you know, from the mask ones, and so I did see the retaliation part. Um, that was added to it, but I didn't know, like, it would be just what part of that, I guess maybe for the policies that do come out. I don't know if it would be helpful to kind of call attention to, these are the parts that look different from the ones that we have.
I know in the past what we did, um, Lydia and I had done, um, Lydia mostly.
Highlighted, you know.
Highlight the differences in, in red so that we knew exactly what was being changed.
A bunch of them were just sort of replacing because they don't, it's not like, you know, Maynard's policy on harassment and masks policy on harassment. And there's minor edits, it's sort of like, there's these ten budget-related policies that Maynard has and these twelve related, budget-related policies that mask has. And just basically overall trying to make sure we're okay with everything on this side and nothing that was here that was unique. You know, is missing from this side and, um, they weren't, a lot of them weren't, um, clear. Um, and I know like one of the ones that we have on tonight, there was really no, there was, ours, ours didn't follow the law and masks was word for word from MGL. And so it was just sort of like delete ours and.
Uh-oh.
Oh, yeah.
The, um, the only question that I had, Mauro, was with the AC, um, non-discrimination. Um, what, is there like a procedure for someone to report the discrimination? Because the other one, the sexual harassment one does have a procedure?
Yes, there is an, an ACR.
Okay, okay, and is that reflected anywhere?
Um.
On, on it?
In on here?
Yeah, to, to reference people to, to it.
Um, at the bottom, oh.
I didn't see it anywhere.
Yeah, no, you're right.
So if that could be added, just so people know, what do I do, you know, what?
Yes.
Yeah, what's the procedure? That was the only, the only comment that I had.
And then the other part too.
Yeah, sorry. Did you put that, Mary, did you put that in your comments on?
I, I will do that right now.
That would be, that would be very helpful.
Mauro, is there another policy that covers that?
There's not a policy, it's a, uh, that, it's an AC dash R.
Okay.
So it's not, um, it just has information on, um, like the definition. Um, it then, um, points to resources that if somebody is going through this, that they, who to contact. Not the specific person, but the, um, the position and then the phone numbers, um, um, that, that kind of information.
Sorry, can you remind me what, what difference between an AC versus an ACR?
Uh, regulation or?
Yeah, the Rs, right.
Like administrative, like how you're enacting the policy.
All right, could you say that again? One more time?
So it's, R is like how you enact the policy, so the policy, and then it's like administrative, like what Brian and puts together how to, how they operationally implement it. That's usually what I understand the art, the orders, is that correct?
Yeah.
So then is it, do we then have to build our own? So it's just so I understand.
No, it's also, mask also puts out those out.
Okay, so we don't have to add it to this, we just have to.
No.
Include the ACR with this.
Right.
Okay.
Just have to put a link to it.
Right.
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah.
I had a question. What's her? Um, so I know when we, in January twenty twenty, we did that mass like acceptance of all these policies. And ones that were similar were not part of that. Um, and I know Maynard has a policy about harassment. And I know that there was like this mapping, so I don't know if we ever accepted AC because even though it was on our website, but because we had a similar policy, I think it was excluded from us accepting it. Uh, I think it's policy sixteen. So I guess wondering how are we, I think we would have to, um, either replace it, right? Uh, rescind it. I guess what we did in the ones that were similar before, right, Mary, that we had to?
I thought that we had initially that January taken on Massachusetts ones for anyone that we didn't have a policy for.
Right.
And then the other, so if they were new, we took those on just as a blanket and then we were going to go back and readdress them and see if there needed to be any tweaks, so we'd be.
Right, but if there were ones that we had some for, then those were not part of that adoption process. So when I look at, um, the harassment one that's on our website, I don't know if this was rescinded at any point. No, it wasn't, right? Oh, I see, calling shaken, no. So it sounds like what we would need to do is then re, like, evaluate this one and then rescind this one first and then adopt the new version, right? So we don't have two policies that are the same.
Yeah, what we did before is we would rescind the old one, replace it with AC. AC is actually more recently updated in twenty twenty-one.
Right.
So it's even more recent than what we adopted originally.
Okay. Terrific. Um, and then I guess, Mauro, my only thing is, was AC looked at, I guess to, to see if there was any language that we would want to add or some things that we were not wanting to keep?
Um, I went through it, I did compare, well, part of the issue is that they included the harassment and retaliation.
Right.
Um, so I did compare it with our non-discrimination, um, and it seemed, you know, more comprehensive, obviously, because of the harassment and retaliation, so, um, I didn't see anything in there, um, that really jumped out at me as something that we needed to change. Um.
It looked like the, um, our policy was more, I guess, exa-descriptive, I guess, harassment includes, you know, it kind of like cited some examples, I, did we see?
B, the, um, ACAB sexual harassment does, um, give, is more specific. Is that what you're thinking of?
Um, the, um, POL, what is, Maynard's policy? POL oh one six harassment, just harassment, not sexual harassment. There's a line there that says harassment includes communications such as jokes, comments, innuendos, notes, emails, display of pictures, like just cite some things that seem more.
That is, that goes into the ACR.
Okay.
They have in the AC dash R has definitions. Um, definitions about discrimination and harassment.
So when we vote on this, Mauro, do we also have to vote on the ACR?
No.
But we, uh, but it is assumed that if we vote for the AC, then the ACR is, is attached to it, we should know that also, right?
No, it's that the admin is responsible for that, so they can do whatever they want with that side.
So what is ACR for then? If they, so it's just what, I don't, I'm not understanding.
It's to give instructions on if you have been harassed, what is, what are the steps that you take?
Like the operational piece, the, the policy is more like high level and then the operational is like how you implement it.
So like, if you look at the sexual harassment one, it gives a very specific idea of what happens if you, if you say that you're sexually harassed at school and there's a very specific thing that happens. Um, that is not in this one, and I don't understand why.
That was the point that I made.
Yeah.
Yeah.
So if there's an ACR, so what, what I think I understand now is there's an ACR that potentially has what this other one has for the sexual harassment, but now it sounds like, no, I'm, I'm not following.
So.
Different.
Um.
I wonder if it's because some in the process for the.
AC, the next one, sorry, the next one that we're doing is ACAB, which is the sexual harassment.
Right. So why is it so different from the, from the?
Elizabeth, I think, I think it's because the aspects in the, um, sexual harassment are due process, there's legal statutory requirements that need to be followed, um, specific to like Title IX that it references more so.
Right.
And I, I know sometimes there's the, um, when it comes to like due process, you have to publicly post with those, what people's like rights are, um, like, you know, handbooks, we have a whole bunch of that kind of stuff. So I'm wondering, that's because that's more the public facing. If we have some legal responsibility to include that, where the harassment part is not good, but I guess doesn't have that same statutory level of, um.
It doesn't? I mean, harassment's also illegal.
Harassments, yeah, it's not good, but I'm just saying it's, it's, it's administrative, like investigating and stuff, it's internal process of how you do it.
So again, in, in the sexual harassment one, it tells you how the, like, someone in admin has to investigate this. Right, there has to be an investigator for this. Um, so, yeah, I'm still, I'm not, I'm not clear. Again, if you look at the bottom, look at the steps you have to take, if you look at the ACAB.
Yeah, the type, because it's title, a lot of it's Title IX related.
Due process protections, right? So they have that for this, but, but not, no due process protections for harassment?
Maybe Jeff. Sure if they fall into the same.
Jeff is at Title IX Coordinator, so maybe Jeff can respond.
How would you like to respond? If I get, if I catch wind of something that is, uh, questionable, I immediately speak to our consulting attorney. And they have a expert in mind, so we, very.
No, I know.
Very set format.
No, I'm just saying that, why is it so specific here in this policy that we have to vote on? What happens if you're sexually harassed? But if you are just harassed, it is not that specific. It has a, it has in the ACAB sexual harassment form, a whole section on due process protections, but not, that is not the case for harassment.
There is the, in further down under E, there's J, which is harassment of students, so that's.
I think they separated out.
Yeah, they, mask decided to separate out, oh, you know, consolidate some stuff and separate others out. Um, I can't tell you why they did that, but, um, I think that, you know, to follow what they're doing so that we're, um, because they have just recently updated this, I mean, some of this, what I have here is that they've updated it as of February of this year, so, um, we really should be following their revisions.
Elizabeth, that just the whole, whole legal, everything legal related to harassment is so much more complicated than it is for sexual harassment in terms of like what's allowed and what's not allowed. And I think there's just so much more gray area that it's, it would be hard to, it's harder to make things concrete.
I see. And are you also saying, Mauro, then there is sort of a tree of like, so there's the top of the tree is the non-discrimination uh, po-policy, and then under that, that top umbrella, there are all of these other policies that, that tell you what to do with different kinds of harassment?
Right.
Um, is there anywhere that we can see, is like, is there, is it laid out like a tree somewhere, like, like all the policies that, that mask is giving us? Is there some way to see how all these things interrelate and have a better handle on how all the policies go hand in hand?
VASK's website lists them all and then the letters sort of give you an idea, so like, the ones that start with A are one category, B is another category, and then if you see the non-discrimination policy including harassment and retaliation is AC, and then the sexual harassment one is ACAB because it builds off of.
Right.
The AC.
But then there's J, which is what?
I think that's sort of falling under, instead of falling under like the legal side of things, that's more into like behavior, I think. Um, the J protocols are a lot of like the student behavior and student involvement and activities and things like student side where I think A is more, um, like legal and.
A is called foundations and basic commitments, that's that whole section, J is student, so they're like, there's broken out into different, like, and those are all mask, um, naming conventions.
Okay. All right, thank you for that. I'll have to look into.
Yeah, G is personnel, um, D is financial, so I think when you become more fluent, like with the, then you'll know like what section they fall under by just that first, those letters.
Okay.
Yeah, B is like school committee related.
Got it, okay.
Yeah.
All right. So then.
So the only other lasting question before we move on, I was wondering if just the, the policies that they cite on the bottom, have we confirmed if we have approved all those or have those? Um, if I know some of those, maybe we haven't, so that would be my only, just to punt it out there, just confirming that whatever we're citing.
Yeah, I can double check to make sure that we, that we have those.
And then to follow up on what Mary asked then, so we do not need to add anything here about, about procedure?
Just add the letter R, because it'll be, that'll be it.
Okay.
Just a link to what the protocol would be.
Under the cross reference.
What the procedure would be, yeah.
Yeah, and the cross reference.
Right.
Um, I, I didn't know, I don't know how much, I didn't know how much of it was taken from mask, so I did go through and change some wording, I, they, um, like dumb things, like for example, in the, in the numbered list, it's all verbs that end in ING promoting, encouraging, working, using, and then they had consider. They may considering. Um, so silly things like that. And then also I had questions about, um, you know, like number six is initiating a process of reviewing policies, and I thought that was weird. Um, why is it not initiating and continuing, not something that's continuous? Um, so I don't know if that is something we should think about or if it doesn't matter. Um, and I'm not quite sure on number five, what, um, what, you know, when it says adverse consequences that these decisions might have on the human relations. On human relations on the, I don't know, I don't, I'm not exactly clear on what that, it does something legal that I don't understand.
I took it to mean relation, inter, like relationships between the people in the school.
Between humans in the school, I was wondering.
And actually, I think somehow that got deleted because in the, my hard copy, it says human relations.
Okay, the, the got deleted?
Yeah, my hard copy does too.
But I did, well, I think that when, because I did it as a suggestion. Um, so I think that when you print out the suggestions go, right, maybe they just get erased and it just goes through like a, with the edits, I'm not sure.
Oh, yeah, so, because when I was looking at actually, um, number five, you had, um, the ING, but I think ING is not, because when you read the sentence, it says the school committee commits to carefully consider.
Considering.
No, the, the school committee is, would carefully consider.
Yeah, I think it is, should be carefully considered.
Yeah, the school committee, although it doesn't, it doesn't make sense in the other words, but it's like, it's a, it's a sentence, the school committee commits to carefully consider in all, in all of the decisions made, so it's not a standalone, starting at carefully considering.
But, but it does make sense, because I, I'm going to continue considering, I'm going to carefully considering all of these things, I'm going to continue to consider as the year goes through.
Right, you're going to carefully, you're going to consider, right?
I, I'm going to consider because I am always going to be considering. Right, I'm using the appropriate, I could also, I use appropriate communication, I'm going to continue to use it. I'm using it, right? Um, I carefully consider, I'm going to continue to do that, I'm considering.
I'm okay with the ING, yeah, just the consistency.
And, yeah.
And we can tweak the words, you know, it doesn't have to stay exactly the same. I mean, there've been many, um, policies when we were doing it during COVID that we would look at other schools' systems and see what they were doing.
Yeah, like, just like they have the, the colon at the top, the school committee commits to, there should be no colon there. Um, so, you know, like, they, they seem to make some mistakes like that sometimes, but I, the one I don't underst, again, number five, the human, like, I, I don't know what it means, if it just means that P, how people interact, that's fine. But if we should know more about what the human relations mean, so that we know what we're putting in our policy, then that's a question I have.
So are you questioning human relations? I, I'm not following.
What I'm saying is, if we're writing it and we're going to vote on it being our policy, I just want to make sure I understand if there's some other meaning for the human relations in, in number five that I don't know.
You could.
Because it's such a clunky way of saying it, it's just, that's why it's weird way of, why not just say on?
Consequences that those issues may have on the human relations.
Central benefits and or adverse consequences that these decisions might have on the human relations.
What is it that you're not, and you're, you don't think that? What is it that you're not, and you don't think that that sounds good? I'm not sure I understand either now.
I'm not, I don't understand what it means. The decision, what the carefully considering and all the decisions with, made within the school district, the potential benefits and, and, or sorry, or adverse consequences that those decisions might have on the human relations. Just like the interaction between people, but the relationship between humans in the building? Is that all it means?
Yeah, I think that's what human, yeah, that's how I interpreted it, is the, like the relationships between people.
Yep, okay.
I bet, I don't know if there's a hidden meaning to that.
It's just a strange wording. And human relations has another meaning, you know, it does like you can have a human relations committee, you know? So I don't know if there's something else that it means. So I don't know if it related to something else.
Isn't, isn't the human racial, human relations committee though about relationships among people? So like within our community?
Yeah, but again, I just don't, it's just a strange way of saying, I don't want to make sure there's not some other layer that I didn't know.
I don't think we need to like try to guess what sort of hidden meaning, meaning people might find and things. I think we just go with what it says and what it means and.
Well, because when, when, you know, like as a teacher, when you have a problem, to go look at the wording of the policy pretty closely. And so if, if it isn't clear, sometimes that can cause problems, right? So that's why I just want to make sure that everything is clear. And so that's a tiny question. And if you guys all agree that that's what I mean, then we have spent too much time on this already. Let's move on.
Oh, Colleen, sorry.
So in reading this, and actually, I've actually come across this this week, I would, I would take it as human relations in the building. Whatever decisions you're going to make, it has effects on everybody. And you have to make sure that, you know, the human relations within the building or within those involved, take that into consideration. That's how I would read it.
Basically, like interpersonal relationships.
Personal relationship, yeah. And other, you know.
Effect. Yeah, if you look at the definition, it says it's an integral part of career success and relates to the treatment of people in a workplace setting. So maybe we just add language, just, you know, add on to that within the schools or within this, you know.
Well, it does say within the school district.
Yeah, that's.
Yeah.
So we're good. Yeah.
Yep, that's. As long as I understand.
Yeah, we're good.
Mara, thank you. And Hillary.
Yeah.
Right, so we're going on to the next one?
Yeah.
So what we planning on voting on this at the next meeting? Is that where our plan is?
Yes. So.
Human update.
Basically, what I'm, what my plan is, is to take the suggestions and make them happen, since we've all looked at them. I'm going to double check the cross references, add the AC dash R. So this will be ready for the next.
Perfect.
Awesome. Mara, can I ask one more question? It's not about this particular policy, but just as you guys are going down the policy rabbit hole. I know Lydia had put together a really great cross reference of like Maynard, Mass, you know, like which ones are similar. And I wonder if that would, because I don't look at, you know, that, that cross reference a lot, but it might help easier some of these, you know, understanding what may align or not. And if I have a question about, I can easily go through without kind of find it.
I don't think we currently have one that's complete.
There was one that she did was maybe not.
You won, but I don't know how updated it is. I'll take a look at it.
Okay, if there's an ability just to see, because I, I think that some of the ones we do have similar. And I just want to make sure, like, if we do have to, like, I know there was some cross referencing there. Maybe it's not exhaustive, but it might be something to start with.
Yep. Do we want to move on to the next?
So the, the only comment that I had on ACAB, which I think is the next one, right? Was the last page, it says, please note that the following entities have specified time limits for filing a claim, and then it lists them. Should we include what those time limits are, or is that getting too micromanaging?
If they were to change them, I think I wouldn't want to state what they are.
Okay, all right. It would just be kind of helpful to know you have to do within 90 days, you know, versus two years or something like that.
I think what, what basically what this is saying is that you need to check with the, these.
And they might be.
Entities to find out what they're, you know, what they are expecting.
In other words, don't sit on it. Yeah.
Yeah, when you get involved in those things, like I've done it, and it gets really complicated. And like sometimes you have to file with one before you're allowed to file with the other. And you might have to, if you want to file with the second one, you have to file with the first one by a certain date. But if you don't, the first one can be filed by a different date.
Yep, enough said.
I wouldn't want to get into it.
That's okay. Yep. So I thought it was easier than that. And then the only other one was the note on the bottom. It said, a summary of the attached policy as adopted must be sent to parents, guardians, students, employees. Is that in our handbooks, or how does that get sent to our community? Do we know?
That's a good question.
I'm thinking the easiest thing would be the handbooks, but having actually Chuck might know about at least the high school piece.
I imagine, Colleen, is it part of the training that every teacher has to do in the beginning of the year?
But it's also parents and guardians and students.
Yeah.
So it's a, it's a whole district.
It should be like the registration online, like annual.
Yeah.
Yeah, my recollection, I don't have it in front of me, is that this is in the student handbook and parent signs off that they wrote the student handbook, although they've read this policy as well.
Okay. Thank you. So maybe if we just take a look and make sure that that's in there.
It is in the following handbook.
Oh, great. So we can think that it's probably in the other two. Yeah.
And the only other thing that I would add, just the same thing, is that we have policy seventeen. So just think this would be one of those resend moments first before we adopt.
Okay.
Are we supposed to be looking at the wording for these, or is this, is that micro? Is that something?
No, yeah, wording is.
Okay, are you doing that? Is that, is that stepping on the policy committee's toes? Or is that, like, I don't want to belabor things, but also I'm not clear on how much I should be zeroing in on these.
No, if you have, if you have suggestions on what you would like to do with it, then
then go.
Make your suggestions on here.
Okay, yeah, I just, I did, I did a few. Like the first one, just to explain, the one where it says the original wording is you've got a contact that is conduct that is so severe persuasive and objectively offensive that it effectively denies a person equal access to the school's education program or activity. I just changed it to make it conduct that is severe persuasive and objectively offensive enough that it does that. I don't, because it's, otherwise it sounds like such a, you know, I think it just, just needs to be enough that you can't do the thing you want to do in this place where you're supposed to be educated. So.
We'll also have to check what the law says.
Yeah.
Yeah, I was going to say that sometimes since these are vetted by counsel before they release them, sometimes if it's substantive, we, our counsel has to look at them.
I think that's why for a lot of these, we kind of kept what mask had.
Yeah.
When they're legally related.
My next question is that next part, you know, where it talks about fifty-one As, requires the public school report cases of suspected child abuse. There's a weird comma there, and then it says immediately orally and file a report within forty-eight hours. But it's not clear who, what are they talking about? Like, are they, that they were orally reported to who?
DCF. When you file a fifty-one A, if you think that a child's in danger, you need to do it immediately, like you call and file immediately on the phone.
I know that. But I'm saying that it says it's immediately orally and file a report within forty-eight hours detailing the suspected abuse to the department. So, so they're talking about DCF. They're saying like you have to call immediately and also file it within forty-eight hours.
The end of that sentence says that.
Well, no, I know. I'm saying that, like, the filing the report is one thing, and usually that is that can be done, like that is done over the phone sometimes, like that is the oral part sometimes, right?
You also have to do the written one.
Yep. So that can be, right. So usually those go hand in hand. Right? And so I don't know why it would be immediately orally and then file a report within forty-eight hours. It kind of like goes together.
I think it's because the law, the law allows forty-eight hours. So it means that, I guess, how I read it, is that you do it orally, but if you wait twenty-four hours to do the report, that that's acceptable under the law. You, and if you do it at the same time, I think, yes, great. But I read it as the law allows, or maybe the policy which is supported or informed by the law. Right, is that forty-eight hours is the maximum you have to do both of those efforts. So the oral is immediate, but the report has to be done within forty-eight hours. That's why I interpret that, but I don't know.
Okay.
Like you have to call the hotline immediately, and then within forty-eight hours, you have to fill out the form.
Okay. And then there's a, I mean, I have questions about this due process, too. Did you guys have questions about it, too? I'm not exactly sure we're signing people up for if this happens, right?
Is this the highlighted part that regulation highlights?
The regulation highlights the importance of supportive measures designed to preserve or restore access to the school's education program or activity with or without a formal complaint. Where there has been a finding of responsibility, the regulation would require remedies designed to restore or preserve access to the school's education program or activity. That sounds like we, I mean, it's, it's, it sounds like what you want to, what they're saying is they want to make sure that whatever activity was, you know, hostile because of sexual harassment, that person who's doing that is removed or punished to the point where they're not doing that anymore. But it also kind of suggests that there might be a burden on us to, you know, make sure we're, we're helping this, the person who's hurt. So I don't know if we need to make that clearer. That's one question I had about what, what that exactly signs us up for. And I hope it's, you know, more. The second part, and then when the due process, you know, the presumption of innocence through the grievance process with the burden of proof on the school. So the school, I'm not clear on whose side the school is on in this. Where, if, for example, it's a a person who works for the school and a student, the burden of proof is on the school, or, or what does that mean? Unclear.
I think the school's the one with the responsibility to figure out what happened and what needs to happen, not the child that brings up a complaint.
Well, the burden of proof. So like, if you're figuring out if this person's guilty or not, then the burden of proof is on the school.
Yeah.
Right. To, the burden of proof is on the school, meaning they're on which side of this.
Neither side, the, the side of figuring out what actually happened and what needs to happen.
They have to investigate.
But if I'm accused of murder, then the burden of proof is on the DA to make sure that they, they have to prove beyond a reasonable doubt that I have done that. That's the burden of proof is on them. Right? To prove that I have done this. So I, so right, so it's, so then what they're saying is that the school has to, is the DA in this, in the situation? Okay.
All right, there's a presumption of innocence throughout the grievance process. So.
Who, who is, I want to know who would be the investigator in a situation like this?
The school.
Who?
Well, no. So the school could also hi- hire lawyers.
But it would be this, they would be acting as an agent of the school.
The who?
The lawyer, any agent, any external third party that we.
What actual human being would be the one?
I think Jeff is the Title IX Coordinator, but then whoever does the investigation would depend on who's involved. I assume Jeff or Brian assigns. Brian? Hope you're muted.
Sorry, it would depend on the situation, but you're right. Jeff has assigned that role. And it could, and depending on the severity of the infraction, it could be Jeff himself, it could be somebody else that he assigns. It could even be that we contact one of our attorneys, depending, again, it's very case specific. So it could be one of our, whether it's a special education attorney, or like Sarah Spatafor, for example, could, but again, she's working on our behalf, you know, working on behalf of the school. So that's what we do. And depending on what it was, we would even contact the police in terms of an investigation, and they would handle that depending on what the exact.
To ensure there's no criminal act there.
Correct.
Okay.
Yes.
All right.
And you can outsource it to independent lawyers, too, if you need, like, if you think that if, if it's something where like the school could get sued, and we want the school's lawyers to defend the school, the whole investigation can be outsourced to a different law firm.
Okay. Yeah, I was wondering how, how would you find people who are working within the building, who would be free from bias or conflict of interest? And so, okay, so that helps.
I would assume like a different school. So if it's like an issue with administration and like power, the high schools administrators might investigate or.
I would say that normally would be the Brian would have to decide that, right? Unless it's something that Brian is, then we, that will be the school committee to involve the lawyers. And I know in the past, the lawyers have assisted in investigations by hiring an outside firm that is not even our law. But they contract, they have special investigative firms that, who act as a third party.
Yeah.
Or if it's a school committee member or something.
Yeah. I mean, it sounds like a lot. It sounds hard. It sounds, reading this sounds like if I was a kid and I had to come forward. It's a lot. I guess there's nothing we can do about that.
Oh, Brian, do you, does this new, or that was what you had, you had in your hand raised?
I will lower my hand. Thank you.
You left your signal light on?
Yes.
Elizabeth, I think it is a lot, but I think it has to be that way.
Yeah, I know, I know.
And I'm going to say, just in referencing the other policy, this pop, our Maynard's current policy is not as detailed. So it actually goes into a lot more depth of the due process, which I think probably is a legal requirement, that it has to expand to outline what people's rights are entitled, which our current policy lacks.
Yeah. Yep. Yeah, okay. What can you do? Okay.
Are we ready to go to the next one?
I think so. But Beth, do you feel somewhat?
No, I just, I just feel like, oof, if I was a kid and I want to come forward, I'd read that and be like, oh, my God. You know, but.
Brian, can I ask a question about, just to think about Beth's question a little bit more? Wasn't there an email address that was created about if you want to report something, just now? Like an incident or?
We have that. I mean, it was in place at the end of the school year last year, correct?
Yeah, yeah. I was just, can you highlight again, would, would that be possibly to be included in any of the regs, or just, I'm wondering if that could be maybe an opportunity to include access to that email a little bit more prominently somewhere. Just to, I know Beth's concern is about access of someone's, you know, how do they report easy access? Would that be, would that email address be?
That could be part of our procedures. So it's in handbooks.
Regulations, and that students maybe would have also access to that, or be able to be informed of that if they so needed to.
Yeah, they used it last year. So we'll remind them.
Yeah, no, thank you. I, I remember that coming up as new, and I thought just, you know, maybe fitting to remind that, that there is another opportunity to, to easily report something, I think. But I don't remember, like, I think it goes to you, or I'm not sure, I can't remember where, but it goes to folks who, it's an easy way to report.
Yes.
Beth, did you think that would, that, is that something that might be?
No, I was just envisioning this, the, I think I was more thinking about like, if you, like, if I had to report something as a, as a kid, you know, there, that procedure sounds like there are times that would be, like, you know, like the part that's like, each side gets to, number four, the opportunity to test the credibility of parties and witnesses through cross examination, subject to rape shield protections, you know, that, you know, there's something about, you know, your character. I think that sounds hard. But I also understand that there's nothing else you can do. And there's, what, what do you, you know?
I just know working at a university, this has been really huge the past two, three years. And a lot of, like, so when I'm reading it, it just sounds like the conversations of policies that are changing in academia.
Yep.
A lot of it is about the due process of the, that. So I, I just, I just automatically go to, that's the reason why. It's the guidance that comes out from the, the federal level that often informs this.
Mm-hmm. Yeah. All right, moving on.
Okay, JFB. Lori, are you available?
Yes, sorry.
All right. I'm, I'm not sure that I.
It's a JAB.
About this one. The JFB.
This is, I know this is one that we did adopt. And so like, is that section with a different font under number five? Is that the, the change?
Yeah, Colleen did this. Oh, Colleen.
Right.
Yeah.
Okay, I do have a marked up one if you want to see it.
Okay, I do have a marked up one if you want to see it.
Cool.
Mary, you're getting up for this one or? Yeah. Oh, Mary's muted.
Thank you, yes, I did, but I'll wait until after.
So what we had, there was some things missing. Um, and there was some repetition in the paragraphs ahead that I put in bullets below, or they were in bullets below. Um, so that number one, I actually could not find any evidence that we cannot accept school choice any other time of the year, so I thought we should probably take that out um to allow us to not be in violation of something. Um, I added to number two that we will advertise the seats. Um, let's see, number five, other districts actually stated when the applications should be accepted until, so I added that because in number six, this is where it gets into the um hearing, so they go on the presumption that we, that all school districts accept school choice. But if there's talk about wanting to not accept school choice, that's when it kicks in. Is this in the right one? Um. I don't know if I'm right, reading the right paragraph, but um if we choose, if we talk about not accepting school choice, that's when the hearing kicks in. Um, although number six is that we have to decide by June thirtieth, where our past one, I think, said first come, first served basis.
Yeah, number two was the one that said that we had to, if we didn't want to.
Oh, right. No, number two is, I forget where it is. Um, but yes, number six, I put in the date for June thirtieth because we do have to decide and determine before July first. Uh, I removed first come, first served basis because unless we max out and need a lottery, everyone is accepted. Um, and it's really not a first come, first served. Um.
The version you have here isn't the version that we have in our folder.
Yeah, the one, the version in the folder, I think, is cleaned up.
Right.
This has all the backups, yeah.
Okay.
Um, number eight was missing some items that MASK had, including homelessness, students, pregnancy-related condition, so I added that.
Which is the new seven.
Right, it will be the new seven. It was said about. And that's pretty much it.
But the only question I have, well, I have a couple of questions, I don't know, Hillary, is this a good time to ask?
Oh, well, Mary has had her hand up.
Sorry.
No, no worries, so I just had a a comment about number six, and I'm not exactly sure how we'd reward this, but if we had a student that wasn't living up to um the uh, not the academic, but it was a a a challenging student in terms of.
By law, we can't, it can't make them leave. Once they're in, they're in, we can't deny anyone based on attendance, we can't deny anyone based on behavior.
Okay, behavior is the word that I was trying to find, okay, so we cannot do that.
We cannot do that.
Okay.
Yep. That we have looked into.
Yeah, appreciate that.
Cool, I'm not necessarily sure that I would agree with that, can you explain why that would be something you?
It's actually stated in the law.
No, but why we would, right, but why we would
want to.
Do that.
Exactly, that's, that's why I think why it's stated in the law, it's not fair to the student.
Right.
Well, it's not fair to the other students if we have somebody that is, yeah, but anyway, there's two sides of that.
It seems like with special ed, does that, does that apply too, like, would uh?
We have to accept anyone who applies.
That's not what I'm thinking, yeah.
Unless we have no seats available.
Do we include things like the Seats in the Tiger program through school choice, or is that a different, would that be in a different mechanism?
Specialized programs, we have to um allow for our existing students. Um, if someone becomes school choice and a year or so after their school choice, they're that accepted and it finds that that program is appropriate for them, we cannot deny them because once they're in, they're in until they graduate. There ours. So like the Spanish immersion, we have to take our own students in ahead of anyone else, WAVM, we have to take our own students in, you know, above anyone else.
Natasha?
Um, the first part about the enrollment or when you accepting during the year, I wonder, and this is more of a budgetary question, is because I know that they count, they calculate for the tuition at a certain point. And I just would worry that is there a cutoff when they, you know, they start calculating where we might not get receiving receipts?
They do it several times a year, they look at it in October, they look at it, I want to say the end of January.
Right, and you can use in that report, using that report in January, right, that big huge report.
Yeah.
And that's when we get the, and then in the fall or whenever the next budget, we get that, the receiving tuition based on that number, okay?
They might even look at it in June, I'm not sure on that one, but that is definitely um the school choice claim form and in Jan- end of January and.
Okay, so there's no, like, potential gap where we would have reported it at some point, and then we maybe are are accepting kids after, and we might not get that reimbursement, that would be my, my, I guess, my wonder.
They do check it, they do check that way through the area.
Okay.
Oh, another thing on here, I think, I can't find where it says the draw, okay, we should have two drawings, we did not have that stated in our last one. So we do one in June and then we do another one if we need to, um, if we've exceeded our open seats the week before school starts.
And school choice is only for K, no, right, it's not?
Not for K.
We don't do K.
Not K, sorry, okay.
Grades one through twelve, if there's openings, right, because we can have, like, for instance, there's no room in grade seven or.
Only when it says, main public schools will advertise a number of available seats, where?
We advertise on the website, we send out, um, put it on social media, and we send it out to families and as an email, so they can spread the word if they know if somebody.
Would we be able to do um include kindergarten in the second, in the um, the drawing right before school starts?
That's a possibility, we can look into that. Yeah, this is also posted on the DESI website, every school choice, when I submitted um before June first, it's all those numbers for all the schools in the state are listed, how many seats they have open.
Are we good with this one?
Yep, yep, I am.
Okay, JIB is exactly from the MASK website. Our policy with regards to having the two student reps to the school committee wasn't consistent with um mask and law. And so, um, this is from MASK, but it's also mo- most of it is word for word from um master and law too. Um. So it's quite different, but um I brought this up a few months ago, and so I think Brian let the high school, I don't know if he let Chuck know or the new principals know, um, and so that this can get started this fall. Um. So that we can be compliant.
Our current policy is one oh five.
Right.
Right, and so basically, we would be rescinding that and then accepting this version.
Yeah.
Oh, am I, so is it, does this mean that every other month we are meeting with all five of these students? Or does it mean we're meeting with representative of of these five students?
Sounds like it's the chair.
Because the committee will meet at least once every other month while school is in session with its student advisory committee, which is composed of five students elected by high school student body. The chair of the student, shall be an ex, okay, so, yep. So that means, wait a second, so does that second sentence mean that the the chair is always at our meetings? Or does it mean that that's the only person who needs to be there every other month?
It's the chair is the one with the authority to be the ex officio member of the school committee meeting, so.
But it says, the committee will meet at least once every other month whilst schools in session with the student advisory committee, which is composed of five students elected by the high school student body, period. Next sentence, the chair of the student advisory committee shall be the non-voting member of the school committee. So that sounds like every meeting, that gets going to the meetings, to our school committee meetings, and every other month we're meeting with the whole five of them.
That's how I read it as well.
Yep, they can be at every one of our meetings.
But then we are also supposed to.
With them every, all five of them every other month.
We are supposed to meet with the the their advisory committee every other month while school is in session.
Yeah.
Charles, how does this work in other districts? Do, does the, do the five members come to every other school committee meeting? Or does certain members of the school committee go meet with them, you know, after school or something?
Be every fourth school committee.
Oh, Charles, you're muted.
Okay.
Charles is muted.
Am I muted now?
Yes.
Oh, how wonderful, thank you, I am so thrilled about this, by the way, very thrilled. Yes, it's very clear in the regulations that there be a student advisory committee, the student advisory committee elects the chair, the chair is the person who is the official member of the uh not official, the member of the school committee non-voting. That person comes to the meetings. The school committee or the members of the school committee who wish meet with the five members of the student advisory committee um every other month or whatever, you know, four, five times a year, whatever it is, they don't necessarily come to the school committee, they can, but it it's it's just a student, the student can't vote, but the student can um can speak uh on matters that come before the school committee. It's a nice way to have the student voice, it's also um served, uh, and in in my experience, is a a wonderful vehicle to understand where the students are, have the support of the students, and it's, it it just is, is it's great for everyone.
Great, dude, how does that, but how do they usually, in what ways do school committees meet with those five students? Do they do it in subcommittee meetings?
Well, yeah, right, um, it's, uh, what we used to do is, it was meet um uh, an hour before the school committee, because we always were meeting in person, we didn't have, we didn't have virtual meetings, and it was an, there was an agenda. Um, and uh, I, when I was superintendent, I happened to um be the person who chaired that because I thought it was extremely important, and it 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 really, uh, it really let the public know as well as school committee, of course, obviously, the school committee know what what some of the issues were and what was going on, and um, and it was, it was great. And of course, the principal of the high school also attended.
In theory, could we meet with the five of them, you know, at four o'clock or something like?
Oh, absolutely, you can do it anytime you want, right, right, yeah, whatsoever, conveniently.
And then their chair could just pick the meetings that they want to attend of our meetings.
Chair should be at every school committee.
Okay, that just seemed like a lot of commitment from them, but.
It is, it is, but um, you know, it's also great on a resume for a student that uses very.
Yeah.
Does this, does this replace um our?
Yeah, um.
It would be part of that, know that you would, that you would have that, that the student would report, you would, you would have a place on the agenda where the student would give a report.
Okay, but but what, I guess what I'm asking is say, we have two students right now, or we did last year.
Right.
Um, as a student rep. Um, but we would replace that with this.
Yeah.
Right, right, but what could happen, what would happen if there was something that would concern more, having more than one student, the student would say, we also have three people here tonight, and we want to just discuss about a project we're doing, um, and, you know, it'd take a few minutes to do that.
Okay.
I'd love to bring it down to Fowler, actually, the seventh and eighth grade.
Well, the, the law is very, regulation, I mean, this is regulations, right, this is something the school, you know, that I'm.
I had the same thought, Mary, but I also saw the regulations.
Yeah, right, yeah.
Well, it doesn't prevent us from doing it.
Right.
It's, um, yeah, because especially as part of the civics program that, you know, that we're instituting and that, it plays right in with that. It also helps nurture them so that when they're up at the high school, um, yeah, but anyway.
We could have the five high school members and then add in Samantha Nee. Sorry, Mauro.
I was just gonna say, I wonder if that, you know, that's something that we can just, you know, ask them to to make sure that they're they're doing is is checking in with um, the seventh and eighth graders.
Yeah, 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 that would be great.
Natasha?
Um, I just was, uh, Mauro for the, or you for this citation, uh, what the references are, I saw that there's a BDF policy there, so I didn't know if maybe we, at the next meeting, we might be able to do a reading of that, or just to to see how, because I just happened to pull it up to read about it, it was, it was good, it's good to talk about task force and stuff, so it it seems like it would be great to understand the formative, what the, what we're approving, and also if it's not approved or is it approved, I think it might be approved, because I don't know if we have a similar policy already, so it may have been one of those mask adopted ones that we probably just want to review.
Yeah.
So, well, you you want us just to read it?
I think, I think it was one of those mask adopted ones, like, we didn't have a similar, so it might just be helpful for everyone on their own or whatever, just to read it, since it's cited in this policy that we'll be um, reviewing anyway, it's a reference.
Okay. Um, Chuck, I I saw you unmuted, did you wanna, do you have stuff for this? Now he's muted again.
Oh, yeah, um. Just a couple of things. The top of JIB refers to organizations such as student councils having a voice and policy. Those are the two students who have been reporting to you are directly from the student council. The high school, it does have a school site council, and on the council, there are uh, five seats reserved for students that are elected by the student body. So it has not been the student advisory committee, uh, so it hasn't been set up exactly right, but we have had five students contributing to the school site council. As I read the language of this closely, it says that the five members are elected by the high school student body, that's pretty specific. So if you wanted to have a seventh or eighth grade representative, I think they would have to present in a manner similar to the two members of the student council as opposed to being an ex officio member to the school committee, because the language is very specific. So that's my take on it.
And that's it, just more as a learning curve kind of thing is what I'm thinking, yeah.
Yeah, I was picturing they could just sort of meet with the five elected official members to be sort of included and see what's going on and.
Yeah.
But.
And have a way to access us in those meetings that we'd have within it bimonthly if they wanted to, you know? All right, this is great.
Okay, um.
Are we ready to move on?
Yes. So harassment of students and then pregnant and parenting students.
We have. Um, JIP is another one that, um um, that we brought um, right from MASK. Um, it's new since they broke things out. Are there any questions for that one?
No. I I did add shame a couple of times, because I, if they're gonna put embarrassed, distressed, agitate, disturb, or trouble, those are very, it's interesting that they didn't put shame, because shame is such a big one, right?
So you, um, are you thinking that under um each section where it talks about the examples to add or to substitute?
To add.
To add, okay, so we design to then like embarrass, shame, okay, add that in there. Okay. I, um.
I, 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 I would be in support of that if that's possible as well. I, I do know that there are instances where shaming in both, some teachers in, in districts have shame teacher, students. I don't think we have necessarily an issue with that, but it's good to highlight that explicitly, I believe.
Well, just because, I mean, they did distress and agitate and disturb, so it seems logical that, you know, shame should be there.
Yeah, public shaming.
Yeah.
We can do that.
Okay. Anything else on that one?
No, and this, you said that this, this is because they broke out the two, right? So we had not, this is totally new, new, new.
Yes.
Okay. I know, okay, so we had, oh, we had something, but that's just the, it was general.
Well, it's from that.
Thing of the sixteen, right? So, once we rescind sixteen, right? Then we would be able to adopt, because sixteen is harassment generally. I think it kind of was that umbrella. And so we would then be able to do both of these harassment ones, right?
Okay, and then the last one is J I E, which is the pregnant and parenting students.
You know, we, we did start working on this last year, and the main thing that we added was strongly encouraged versus what I was looking at in the handbook for the high school right now. Committed to remain in regular classes.
Right, but I, we also added some and reworded some stuff in here.
Yeah.
So we added.
Trying to be gender inclusive.
And also obviously bringing in the parenting part of it. So I, we referenced, or we took a look at the Framingham Public Schools policy, and some of the stuff in theirs, I added to this. Mainly the second, the second sentence, second and third sentence in the second paragraph. After the birth, parenting students are strongly encouraged to return to the same academic and extracurricular program as before the leave. Any variation from this plan will be determined by the student's healthcare provider in consultation with the school health services staff.
Would that be their leave? Oops.
I, I want to, I have a question about the leave too. Do we have codified what kind of leave a person would get if, after having a baby as a student? Is it, you know, and are they, you know, like, if kids out sick for a very long time, then I have to get put together work for them? That, is that something that is codified somewhere else?
I don't know the answer to that.
Brian?
So I don't know that there's a legal term for that leave for a student. I think it's more similar to a student who would have been in the hospital that we would support said student with, if in this case, academic work, et cetera, any supports that they really needed that we could provide for them. I don't know that there's a specific term, however.
Yeah, so it's not, it's, so there is nothing codified about parental leave for students anywhere in Massachusetts state law?
Jeff?
Under home hospital tutoring, physician could confirm that a child is not able to return to school. That could be one of the, the documents that we, we might be searching for. Hopefully, the building base support team or the case management team would meet and say, how, how best do we support this, the parent going forward?
I don't think it's necessarily meant to be like a paid leave, Beth, is that what you were thinking?
But, no, that'll be, they're still.
Oh, like, like a leave, like, no, you're like saying, like parental, I thought that's what you had mentioned.
Parental leave, as in like, for example, you know, in Massachusetts, you can get your, your job held for eight weeks, you know, if you have, if you have a baby, right? And so you're.
That's for the workplace. For employer.
Workplace only.
Why, oh, I know, but that's why I asked, is there something similar like that for students?
No.
I think that's what this is saying, is you can go back to your, like, you go back to your normal class, your normal programs.
Okay, I'm gonna, I'm gonna try to be clear. What I'm saying is, this says leave as if there's some predetermined amount of time that they are expected to be out after they have a baby. If it's not a leave, that is.
Absence, is the word absence, I put a suggestion of absence, is that better?
The word absence. And if it, and, and if it's not, is there some, are we saying that we are kind of expecting that you'll be out after the baby? We kind of are expecting that you'll be out for X number of weeks, because that makes sense, because we're humans. And that, and that, in that case, then we would probably want to put that in here if it's not somewhere else in state law already.
I wouldn't want to give it, you mean, like, say how long we expect them to be out for?
Sorry, what?
Are you saying we should say how long we expect them to be out for?
Um, or that we, that, that, that we understand, because it says any variation from this plan, but it's not clear what the plan is. If we're saying that we expect, like, that we're gonna kind of understand that the accommodations that we're gonna kind of universally make are these. Like, we expect you'll be out for three weeks. That's kind of a universal kind of baseline that we're thinking that would happen after you have a baby. And here's what we need, and then you will get the work like this. I can understand that. But it, because this is any variation from this plan, but the plan is, there is no plan here, that the, the plan is that they're.
I think, I think the plan is saying that they are encouraged to return to the same academic extracurricular program. And so the variation determined by the healthcare provider would be like, say they're playing varsity basketball, and they have a baby. They're not gonna, maybe not gonna return to varsity basketball two weeks after birth, because they're still healing, and that would be like, their doctor would say, you can't play sports for eight weeks, but you can return to school at three weeks, like.
That would be, but that's like, so why have this policy? Because that's anytime your body's going through something, and if you have a doctor's note, then of course, you're not gonna play that sport, that's how it goes. So what's the point of this policy?
Policies in general are just like, so you can, like, you put it in writing if you feel it's important enough to do so.
But I think this is kind of already covered.
So I think the policy, I think the policy's here, because originally, the policy wasn't, was not worded very positively for birthing students, students who were pregnant, and it was almost like, we'll kind of let you come back if we have to. It was not positive at all. So I think the point of the policy is simply to say, we want you to come back, and we're gonna support you in every way we can. I don't know that we can identify a specific timeframe.
Right, okay.
Okay.
So then, if the, if the point is to make sure that you, if the, if the point is that we're trying to make sure the kids know that they are, that we want them back, then maybe it's pregnant students will be supported in remaining in regular classes to, and, 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 and in participating in extracurricular activities to the best ability of our, of our resources or something. Right now, it just sounds like, it sounds a little punitive still, right? It sounds like you should probably get your ass back to class, is what it sounds like. And I, if that's not what we're trying to get across, and if we are trying to get across that we will do what we can to support you, then we should think about the wording.
I wasn't reading it that way at all. Yeah, I'm, neither, neither did I.
Okay, I do.
So I think what Elizabeth might be meaning with leave, as in a staff member who's leaving, they make a plan ahead of time. So in any type of situation like this, I would assume, guarantee that the guidance and the principals would be in touch with the, the student, the family, and making a plan and know ahead of time what their anticipated lead is.
Yeah, no, I agree. So that's why I'm, I'm just, so if, if the point of this policy is to make sure kids know that they're welcome back, then I just think that the wording, you know, will be, you know, like, some, there should be something about supporting them. Because right now, it just says, you know, there's, you are strongly encouraged, you are strongly encouraged to remain in regular classes.
So would it be, can I have a suggestion? Would it be helpful to put, you are strongly encouraged and supported? Like, just add, is it, you're just wanting to add more of a nurturing element to it where it doesn't sound like, or else, kind of?
Right, if, if that's the point of the policy, which is what Brian is saying. Otherwise, I would say, I would imagine that if you are pregnant and having a baby, then as Brian was saying, and as I was saying, then all of the things around that would already be taken care of, because it's the doctor's note, you know.
Right, so I, I think.
To the guidance councils, there's really probably, I don't see another reason for a policy, unless we're trying to communicate, as Brian said, that we do want you back. And if that's the case, then we should think about the wording, making sure that that's clear.
I don't have a problem with adding and supporting in here. I mean, if that's a consensus that we want to, you know, basically come across as being supportive, that's fine. I also don't have an issue with the word leave, considering, you know, I, I personally don't want to change it to absence, because I don't, I guess I don't, they're not, yes, they're absent from the, from school, but it's still a, almost like a leave of absence.
Like, when a kid is in a hospital for a long time, it's still called an extended absence.
I'm not sure these are hugely substantive, you know, points for me, but I, I want to make sure, like, I leave or absence, I think is, I'm fine with that. I think it doesn't change the messaging, and I don't think it in, in, impacts how it's implemented. I think it's just a matter of the tone and how you, you know, it comes across.
I take leave to mean encompassing something like taking a year off. Like, I wouldn't consider a student absent if they're out for, it's like, they don't enroll for a year, they take a year off to have their baby, take care of their baby, be home. I don't, I don't consider that like an absence.
I think it just depends on, on, you know, how long it is. I mean, we, we, we basically say, I'm, I'm taking a, you know, parental leave is, you know.
But those are, those are employer protections. I just want to make sure there's a difference, though, like, there's, there's a certain, like, protection under the.
No, I, right, I understand, but what I'm saying is, is the, the kind of the definition of what we're talking about with those compared to this, you know, that were it's similar from my point of view.
Can this be something that is resolved offline?
Yep.
Yeah, I'm wondering, Elizabeth, if you might be the one to put together like an extra couple of sentences or something.
Yeah.
I, I see her putting some now, some suggestions, that's.
I'm just doing that real quick.
Yeah.
So that's, yeah, that would be good.
Thank you for clarifying what it's for. I appreciate it.
I know the older policies, leave was the words. I think it just carried over, like, it was.
Yeah.
Just, I'm looking.
And Framingham uses the word leave also.
I think it's just the, yeah. Standard.
Okay, do you want to move on to superintendent's report?
We have, wait, hold on, do we have more?
Oh, that's it.
Students' involvement in decision-making, do we do J I B?
Yeah.
Oh, we did, that's J I S, okay, sorry.
Yeah, yeah, we're good.
I thought it was named something else, sorry, okay.
Brian?
Sure, there's actually a lot of information in the report, which you've all read, because it's been in there since the prior meeting. There's two people on screen, so I think I'll just sort of hop to that, one being Cheryl Lucas is here to make sure that you're supportive, if you have questions, actually, to address any questions for the music trip, which I think you've all seen the memo. So if you have any, it really just supports the prior presentation of why we want to do this trip for the students. It's been a couple of years without such excitement. They've been invited, they're excited, they've gotten fundraising rolling, and the company has supported in terms of if, by some reason, they have to cancel for whatever reason, i.e. COVID or something, they get a full return on their monies at this point, which I think was really the big question the school committee had, just to make sure that nobody was at a loss. And I invited Cheryl, she nicely has been here for a while, so, that's what, if you have questions for Cheryl.
Thank you, Cheryl.
Yeah.
Although I have.
I have a question.
Yeah.
Um, for, just looking at this memo, when it has the cancellation policy in that chart, is that without the optional trip insurance, or is that with the trip insurance?
That's without.
Okay.
Yes.
And then, in the highlighted section where it says, provided the school wishes to cancel the trip, is that if only in cases where the State Department warns not to travel to Florida?
Um, I believe it has to do with the C, CDC guidelines at that given time.
Okay.
Yeah. So the trip, the World Class Vacations has offered up another sort of flyer that talks about basically that same thing, saying they would provide for a full refund on any school trip, should there be a CDC travel ban to Florida.
Okay.
And whether they cancel it, you know, start the, the ball rolling on canceling it, or whether the school wants to cancel it in that situation.
Okay. It wouldn't cover things like Massachusetts saying no out-of-state travel.
Massachusetts or the school district.
I'm sorry, I froze for a second. You know, early on in COVID, the governor said there was no, like, voluntary out-of-state travel. It wouldn't cover something like that, right?
I'm not sure. I'd have to, oh, yeah, I'm not sure. I'd have to ask the travel company that question.
That's okay, I'll, it's good, it's good enough. Other questions?
So I would just ask the school committee to give approval for the trip to move forward formally.
Yeah. Does someone want to make a motion?
I'll make a motion to somebody helping with the wording.
So we approve the Walt Disney trip in April twenty twenty-three, based on the recommendation provided. Is that right?
Yeah, assuming it's allowed by all.
Maybe even the letter of July seventeenth, twenty twenty-two, as a reference.
Oh, I see what you're saying, the, the July seventeen, twenty twenty-two recommendation.
A second?
Okay, discussion?
So again, it goes back, and I'll probably have my head handed to me again, which is okay. So Cheryl, my concern is that there's enough adult-to-student ratio, that if somebody were to get sick, there's gonna be protocols in place for, you know, if, if one of the kids has to be quarantined, how do they get home? If an adult is, you know, comes down with COVID, is there enough, you know, additional staff to, to take care of the kids, that kind of thing?
Yes, we just had a Disney trip committee last week, and we discussed this in particular with the nurse that's going to be on the trip. And we are erring on the side of additional chaperones to account for that situation if a student has to be quarantined in this situation. So we are looking at increasing our chaperone numbers to account for that and make sure we have enough adults to allow for the proper supervision. Also, the World Class Vacations Agency that we're working with will assist with travel arrangements for parents to come down and retrieve a student who is sick or come and stay with the student if they have to quarantine within the state. So they have offered to assist with those arrangements.
Perfect, thank you so much. That's, that puts my mind at ease, thank you.
The other thing that I've done is with Kevin Kozik's help, is we're actually talking with Liz York, the new principal, around what is the school's protocol around COVID on school trips. So we just want to make sure we're following the school's established protocol on that. And so I've, I actually shared this July seventeenth updated report with her. And I, I met with her personally last week to just introduce myself, let her know a little bit about where we stand with the Disney trip, planning and all of that process, what's happened during school committee discussions, and she's taking that back and just making sure that she can provide the, the group, and particularly our nurse, with any of the guidelines the school has established.
Great, thank you.
You?
Um, roll call, is people ready to vote? Okay, Mauro?
Yes.
Natasha?
Yes.
Elizabeth?
Yes.
Mary?
Yes.
And I'm a yes. Thank you for organizing this and. Organizing this and.
They're all so excited. I can't even tell you how excited the students are to, to finally get this opportunity. So thank you.
It's so exciting to vote yes on a trip, finally, that, I know, I know. Oh, man, it feels great. Good for them.
How is the fundraising going in, in terms of expectations and what you were hoping? In order to make sure everybody can afford it?
It's going okay. I would say it's, it's average. It's probably not a huge year, but just to, but there are like certain opportunities that have give, that we've been given that we didn't account for. So for example, last weekend, we actually set up a table at the farmer's market in Maynard. And the jazz band performed and it was something that I worked with Trish Gately to arrange. And so she had the students playing, we had a little jar that we ended up raising fifty dollars in cash and just in two hours. So, you know, we, we definitely have had some good opportunities in that respect, and we have some upcoming fundraiser, raisers in the fall as well.
Thank you.
Thank you all very much.
Thank you.
You don't have to hang.
That policy part, wow. I don't envy you guys for having to go through that.
Okay, and so this does not require a vote, but I thought it would be worthwhile to the school committee to hear update on our summer programming, which has evolved since COVID. So I've asked our new director of curriculum, Mr. Kerry Janis, who's been in contact with the teachers that taught the school, the summer school program, to give you a real overview of all that was accomplished over the summer. I can say, having seen the program at each of the buildings, it was really exciting in a variety of ways, but I do not want to steal thunder, so I'm going to turn it over to Chuck.
Thank you, Brian, and I know Colleen has slides that we can be presenting. We had five different summer programs at the schools this year. The earliest program began on June twenty seventh and the final program wrapped up on August fourth. I want to thank the coordinators who were listed there for their input in helping create this presentation, and I also want to acknowledge the more than thirty teachers who helped implement the program. And the next slide, you'll see that the summer programming actually does connect to all three pillars. There was particular emphasis on social emotional learning, but there were academic components built into all the activities and they were designed with universal design for learning in mind, along with tiered systems of support, so that all students were accessing the activities academically as well. And the model was to be hands-on and have fun. That was, that was, I think, the easiest way to summarize it. The program was designed to address learning and socialization gaps. I'm not going to just read the slide. I think everyone's aware that COVID has created a variety of gaps for our students. For some students, the gaps might be particularly in specific academic areas and for other students, they were really harmed in terms of social development and opportunities to make friends. So the, the summer programs were designed to create an environment where kids could just see other kids and, and mingle and have fun while, again, organizing around activities that had academic benefit as well. I'd also want to point out that the initiatives that we put in place this summer and some of these were in place the previous summer as well. These are in addition to longstanding partnerships we have with the Boys and Girls Club and through summer rentals that we do, that many of our students participate in things like basketball camps. So if you were to walk into Maynard High School, for example, in the middle of July, when I think many folks think the buildings are just kind of, they're just kind of crickets chirping. We have our extended year program running for special education students. We might have camps, we might have the Boys and Girls Club. We have our own programming. There could be two hundred, two hundred and fifty students in the building on a July day. So there really are a tremendous number of opportunities for our students to have productive opportunities to continue their learning or to increase their social skills during the summer. The next slide is just a quick summary of the numbers at each program. We ran a program, the, at Green Meadow. It ran for five weeks from July fifth to August fourth, was open to students in grades one to three. They had forty-three participants, including E L students, Spanish immersion students and special ed students. The Fowler also had an enrichment program during those dates. Also, right around forty students, again, with a mixed population. Minyard High School had three, forty-four students in three different programs. For the first time, we had a program designed specifically for English learners. We had eight of our English learner students in that program for two weeks. Several of them continued on into the Sotheby's High School enrichment program as well that ran until August fourth. We had our own enrichment program at the high school for eighteen, which enrolled eighteen students. And we also had a credit recovery program running at the high school, also enrolling eighteen students. We're gonna, I'll be describing all five programs in more detail in the subsequent slides in just a minute. The cost was approximately sixty thousand dollars for all programming we added. Of this, thirty thousand was paid, it's actually twenty-nine thousand nine hundred and ninety-nine dollars and ninety cents, if I recall correctly, was paid by ESSER grants and the remainder was picked up by the district through school choice funds. Of this sum, a little over fifty-three thousand dollars was used to pay staff and the remainder was used to purchase materials and equipment. Some of that equipment does, you know, continue to exist. Equipment doesn't just evaporate and can be used in things like science programs going forward at the high school. A policy implication of this is that we currently have, we've utilized ESSER funds the last two years to pick up a big piece of the cost of these programs. If we want these programs to continue and be free for all participants and all programs, then the district will need to consider an additional thirty thousand dollars of funding. I know Brian and I have discussed this. I think we have figured out some ways that we can bring down the overall cost without affecting the programming. There are costs associated with getting everything up and running in the first year or two that wouldn't necessarily continue. So, yeah, I think we can bring it in for less than sixty thousand dollars in the future. But, you know, the committee should be prepared that the, the cost might go up somewhat beyond the thirty thousand that's currently being contributed by the district. Now we'll get into the actual programs. And I want to thank each of the individuals who were our coordinators for preparing, helping prepare these slides. First, the summer enrichment program at Maynard High School, I want to thank Rochelle Lerner for sending this information along. You can see the list of court classes that were offered during these two-week sessions. Sort of mini-class was offered for a week and then students in the second week of the program could change their classes to something else, or they could continue in a class if, if they were enjoying it. So it was broken down that the students had two sessions per day in these classes. They had an additional activity session in the midst of that. They were able to have snacks during the day. And the students were extremely active and engaged. When they, and if we go on to the next slide, you'll see that when they were building mousetrap cars, they were building mousetrap cars and they were intent on seeing how fast and how far the cars they designed went. We had several R programs, bookbinding, printmaking. Again, the students really enjoyed those and also had opportunities to do things related to mathematical calculation. And that was all extremely worthwhile. The next summer program at Maynard High School is related to English learners. We had eight students. You can see the breakdown by languages spoken. Those students took two field trips to really facilitate the use of their spoken language. One of the field trips was a scavenger hunt through downtown Maynard, where they interacted with merchants and individuals through the downtown. And they also had discussion and writing assignments related to each of the field trip. The second trip was to Minuteman National Park in Lexington and Concord. Again, the students were able to see some artifacts of early American culture or learn some history facts by actually visiting. And they also had a scavenger hunt there and where they were expected to note key facts. They took pictures of themselves in the monuments and it was a, a very successful trip. The final program, with thanks to Rita Murphy, was credit recovery. At the end of the school year, we ran reports on all our students. We determined that twenty-five students were in need of credit recovery due to not passing classes at the end of the year. Our guidance counselors really did a great deal of outreach and discussion with all twenty-five students and called home to try to have those students come in over the summer to recover credits. Eighteen of the twenty-five students accepted the invitation. They all completed the summer program. They took a total of thirty-four classes and recovered a hundred and seventy credits, which will help keep them on track toward graduation. I enjoyed what Rita injected, interjected here that most of them said, even though they enjoyed themselves, they didn't want to return next year. Yeah, I think as I walked through that program, the students were working extremely diligently through the summer and we're really hoping that the study habits and the success that they were able to have in the summer really kind of spurs them to continue in that vein for the coming school year. So we were very pleased to see how well those eighteen students did. We really tried to get all twenty-five to come, but eighteen ultimately did. Meanwhile, at the Fowler School, they ran an enrichment program. It was available grades four to eight. They were provided with structured and unstructured activities and language, arts, math, science and art in general. This was a very hands-on program. You can see again about forty students were enrolled. They had twenty-five students attending on a daily basis. Not surprising in the summer, some of the students, their families might go away, have a planned family vacation for a week in the midst of the four weeks. So the attendance fluctuates, but everyone is welcome every day. There is a link there that you can click on to the Fowler Summer Enrichment Program. And they have some visuals there of, of their program. And I, I'd urge you to do that when we have a bit more time. The final program was at the Green Meadow School, which is the next slide. I'd like to thank Monica Valdez and Kelsey Rogers for this. It's her forty-three students, eleven percent were E L students and they benefited greatly from conversational English that they were able to engage with, with their peers. And there was a focus on academic vocabulary and instruction as well. Students from the Spanish immersion program were also engaged. And again, this really helps strengthen social skills and which has, was also a point. They also had an animal show, they had a guest speaker. And going to the next slides, Monica and Kelsey, a few days ago, sent along their own PowerPoint presentation. So I'll just, I'll just let that speak for itself at this point if, if Colleen to go through. So here come the highlights of the program. There are some of the forty-three students in grades one to three. You can see some of the students and activities that they're doing. You can also see that here's more photos of students and just enjoying themselves. Here's the next slide is the students of Spanish immersion doing some of their activities. It included unstructured playtime outdoors, so that kids could just run around and socialize, have a good time. The next slide shows the guests from the community came in and spoke about robotics and the students were fascinated and wanted to learn more. And the next slide, you can see them at the, in collaboration with the Maynard Public Library, the animal show that they, where they learned about animals and nocturnal animals and their adaptations. So, you know, there, there they are enjoying that activity. And finally, here is the list of the seven teachers who were involved with that program. So, final slide, I want to again thank Monica and Kelsey for preparing this slide deck. And thank you for listening and any questions, I'd be happy to take.
Um, that's just amazing. I love seeing that. That's so awesome. You guys have done so much this summer. Natasha? Natasha's muted.
That was, that was, echo, yes, awesome. Love the pics. I was actually going to ask about temperature was one, because I know this is really hot and I know not all the areas necessarily in, in Green Meadow are, are air-conditioned. And was it, was it primarily, was, how was, how did that work out this particular, this summer when you had such heat? And I imagine every summer, if we wanted to explore this, I know there was air conditioners that were, I think, rented in some, in some places. Was that, did I see that on the warrants before?
To be honest, I'm not certain if air conditioners were brought in specifically for this program. The high school is air-conditioned. So the programs there, you know, kids did go outside and run activities, but they could also come back in and cool off. The wing of the Fowler School that's air-conditioned, the library was used heavily, for example. So we, we tried to keep the students cool. Similarly, at the Green Meadows rooms that were air-conditioned were used. They did have a little splash pool and some water things outside for the children. So we, we managed to evade, if not beat the heat, but it would certainly be something to consider. We, we might want to consider maybe adding a new Green Meadow School in the future. I don't know if anyone's. That would certainly alleviate that down the road as well.
I have heard some, some programs who bring on-site like water slide on Friday, or you know what I mean, just to kind of beat the heat where it's nothing that, less expensive than going on a field trip, but also allow some of that, get outside and, you know, cool off. Celebratory, because I, I think that the summer programs are, are really cool, especially when you're able to add some also's like some camp feel to it, where kids, like their peers might be, you know, in a traditional camp and that they're not feeling like they're in school, just, you know, all learning. I feel like the educational component or comes together a little bit easier in those, in those instances. So that's wonderful.
It really is the spirit of all three programs. With the exception of credit recovery, the spirit of the programs is, can you have fun with your friends in a camp-like feel? And by the way, the, what the activities are designed to reinforce academic concepts as well, but in a whole different way, way and field than the school year.
So a couple of things I wanted to just highlight, I saw that the credit recovery had about nine out of eighteen students who were participating. Who were participated, which is about fifty percent. And I'm sorry, no, eighteen students. It was fifty percent who were on I E Ps or who were E L students. So I just thought that was an interesting. Data point that might be worth exploring a little bit more. Because I just know overall that is something that is reported to the state of how, you know, that particular population. So I'd like to, you know. In the future, data analysis may be worthwhile thinking about why, what is it that leads to fifty percent of, you know. Those who need credit recovery fall into those, those brackets. The other question I was wondering is the. Enrichment programs, did you notice any type of trend or pattern in, in which grades were really? So was it rising? Fourth graders or, you know?
It was at the high school level, it was heavily ninth graders, some tenth graders and an occasional junior or senior. The elementary school, I, I just don't have that in front of me right now. I'm, I'm sorry, I can.
I think in the future, that would be something to be interested to see what was the enrollment of the rising, because I know sometimes.
I actually did see that. I just don't have that with me right now. I know the scatter at the. The scatter at the Green Meadow, there was a little bit of a heavier third grade. Component, but there was good scatter across the grades at the Green Meadow and the Fowler.
Great. And just a more of a, I guess, operational is thinking about. Balancing safety and we have more students. On site during the summer and I just, you know, thinking about everything that happens and office hours and how that. Is all being tracked and accessed to buildings. I just wanna, you know, maybe a conversation for this. What are that, what do those protocols look like over the summer if we're increasing our onsite student population over the summer? Which I think is great that we're able to do that. I just want to make sure that we also have those other plans of. You know, who's walking into the building and how that's, you know, being monitored. Cause I, I believe sometimes the front office isn't fully. You know, manned. I think there was some days that maybe on Fridays that they could follow, they were closed or something. I don't, I don't know all the hours, but I just want to make sure that there's. Whatever that is, it's just a conversation that we're. Being proactive for as opposed to someone walking in and.
The summer programs run Monday to Thursday. So on Fridays, when the offices were shut down, the programs also weren't occurring.
Okay, so the, or is it office hours generally Fridays or the offices are closed?
This summer for a few weeks, the superintendent opted to have the offices closed down on Fridays. A few weeks, yep.
Okay, that's good to know. All right. And then just thinking about. If there is a change in that, because I, and this is not necessarily related to this, but just again, access to the building. That there's, you know, a change in the office hours or when people can access to gain, it might be helpful to communicate that to the community. Just so parents aren't coming and thinking that someone might be available on a Friday or not. But thank you very much for everybody's work on, on that. And I look forward to budgetary discussions and how we can in some way sustain. Many of these things, it's clearly impacting our students in the way that we want.
Yes, I agree.
Any else? Um, I have a, I just wanna, I also know that some of your teachers. Helped the Boys and Girls Club with programming and my daughter participated in that and really, really loved. The time over at the high school with the Maynard teachers doing STEM. And then my question, I have questions about the credit recovery portion. Because we had discussed the fees or no fees in the spring. Were the thirty four classes that the kids made up, was that how many credits they were intending to make up or were there? Some kids that were unsuccessful with certain classes?
It was a hundred percent pass rate.
Okay, that's awesome.
The teachers who were involved with that, if a, if a student was getting behind it all, they. Received one-to-one tutoring for as literally as long as it took to, to get them through.
That's really awesome. The seven kids that didn't choose to participate, did you guys get a sense of? Those because they didn't want to or if there were factors in their family that made it difficult for them to do it or?
I know a couple of the students, their families were taking vacations and. They elected to take the vacation. A couple of the students. Said they had jobs and they simply were going to do the work. And just a one or two students said, I'm not coming in in the summer. Yeah.
Yeah. I was just wondering if there's anything we could do to ca- capture those kids.
We, we really, you know, of the students who said, I'm not coming in this summer, it wound up that maybe two. Held to that. The number of students who said that initially upon the first meeting with their guidance counselor. Was close to a hundred percent. So. There was, there were some discussions and outreach to the families and, you know, with some real follow-up. It, it, we were able to convince, you know, more than two thirds of the kids. That it would really be worth their while in the long run, even though it may not be the number one thing you want to do in July and. And I have to say, I know it's anecdotal, but the students who came in over the summer. They looked like, I don't know how to put it beyond, almost like changed individuals by the end of the summer. That there really was that sense of I was successful doing this. I didn't think I'd be successful and I was. They made really good connections with the staff members who were there. So I think the dynamic for some of the students of almost the. The teachers aren't my friend, might even be out to get me, if you will. I think that attitude really shifted dramatically. And again, we're hoping that, you know, the. That their own confidence because they accomplished this as a legitimate accomplishment really carries over into. The coming school year. I know that the students who were involved in credit recovery last summer, two summers ago, had. Hugely better school years this year. So we're hoping to see that effect again.
Can you pass on thank yous to all the staff who worked with the kids over the summer, particularly the credit recovery kids?
You bet.
Yeah, congratulations to them, really. Kudos to them to putting in that extra time and.
Into the kids, into the kids.
As I'm saying, the kids, kudos to them for putting in that extra time and also those relationships for trusting adults. I mean, that's really key for their future success. So.
The fact that they did it in the ninth and tenth grade and so they hopefully will have. Good experiences. It's not like they came in at the eleventh hour, you know, going into the twelfth grade, so.
By that word, I'm really happy for them.
I'm wondering, so my daughter's school, they did a tutoring thing over April vacation for MCAS for kids. And if the kids participated and accomplished certain tasks over the week, they got a fifty dollar gift card to Amazon. And that was an appeal to go to this tutoring program. Do you think the kids that didn't want to participate? Something like a hundred dollar gift card if you complete it would be incentive or is it more deep than that?
I honestly think it's deeper than that. I think something like a family vacation that where the families probably. Laid out thousands of dollars is gonna be overtaken by a relatively small gift. Where the students who really. Felt that work was extremely important and earning money was extremely important. I mean. Conceivably fifty dollars might have some impact, but it's. Really less than they're making in, you know, a day or two.
They might be helping, having to support their family too, so.
I was more thinking about the couples, like the two, two or three students who just didn't want to go.
Didn't want to go? That's where I'm thinking, you know, maybe that gets another student or two through the door. It's, it's possible.
Thank you so much.
I think they need to come. They just need to, yeah, not, not be bribed with money. Either you want to do it or you don't.
Yeah, so the last thing that earlier, a couple of weeks back, the governor signed the budget and there was a question about what does that mean for us? I think Elizabeth may have asked that in an email. So I asked Wayne, can we explain that, what that really, unfortunately, it doesn't. Mean a whole lot to us, but I want you to understand why it doesn't mean that. So he put together something quick just to help explain that. Wayne?
Yes, thank you. Unfortunately. My presentation doesn't have any cute children or fuzzy animals. I guess I'm at a serious disadvantage. I'll have to hold your attention in other ways.
Money talks. It's okay.
So as Brian said, he asked me to kind of give an overview of what governor's, Baker's budget. Means the school in particular to us. The short answer is not much. Next slide, Colin. Kind of a recap. Money to continue to fund the implementation of Student Opportunity Act. Added over six hundred and fifty million dollars in new spending about FY twenty two. Almost four hundred ninety-five million to increase chapter seventy funding. Including an increase in a minimum per pupilate from thirty dollars to sixty dollars. For total chapter seven investment of five point nine nine billion. But what is good to see is there's almost a sixty-eight million dollar increase in special education circuit breaker reimbursement. For local cities and towns and almost ninety million additional funding for charter school reimbursements, obviously. Next slide. Hundred and fifty million for one-time transfer to the Student Opportunity Act Investment Trust Fund. Again, a highlight is a hundred and ten million dollars for pilot of free school meal program. For students K to twelve. Put in layman's language, extended another year of. Free meals for all students in the Commonwealth. And, you know, I've already disseminated some information about that and to some of the building principals that has gone out. And some of their communications. So we were glad to see that and. Our new food service management company, Whitsun, is aware of that and. We're getting staffed up and ready for when school starts. But over thirty million to scale up college and career pathways, fifteen million for scholarships and loan forgiveness programs for public school teachers. That's good news. Next slide, Colin. Now, I said there was an increase in chapter seventy funding and it was a significant amount, not for Maynard. What we, you see what we got, five point four million in FY twenty two. This year was slated to get five point five million. That's only a little over seventy-four thousand dollar increase. So while there was a lot of money put in the chapter seventy, the formula that they use was not favorable to us. Next slide. Circuit breaker, though, there was this almost a sixty-eight million dollar increase for special education circuit breaker. The thing is, the district allocations have not been published yet. So again, we don't know what it means to the district in terms of what increase, if any, we will get. Next slide. So what I did here was I showed you historically what circuit breaker has been since FY nineteen. And for FY twenty three, as I told you, there is no number. But my guesstimate is six percent. Previously, it has been greater than that. But I wanted to be conservative. I didn't want to put a number out there and then, you know. It, it, the, the number that is allocated lower than that. So that's a conservative number. Next slide. So although the governor increased chapter seventy throughout the Commonwealth, very little is coming to Maynard. Sixty-seven million dollar increase in circuit breaker year over year, but we don't know how much we're gonna get. And I think that's my last slide. Next slide, Colin. Yeah, that's, that's it in a nutshell.
Thank you. I have a question about Maro.
I'm wondering why is it, why is it that Maynard specifically isn't getting more than that? Is it because of whatever formula they use? Because I know that last time that I was on the school committee, we really tried hard to get them to change how. Change the formula. I'm not sure where that ended up. Since then, I know that they were talking about changing certain formulas, but also our classification. As a town in relation to the fact that we are basically a small city. Because of all of our utilities and the things that we offer. So I'm just wondering. What, you know, why is it that we didn't get more than that? And then what can we do to kind of advocate for ourselves? To either have our classification changed or how that, what can we do?
Well, it, it's based on the formula. There are a number of things that go into the formulas. A good bit of it is the demographics of the district. Chapter seventy seems to be more heavily weighted towards the. The cities and towns that have demographics worse than us. I say that Maynard is kind of a Goldilocks type of city or town. We're not rich, but we're not poor. And, and when you compare yourself to say the Everets, the Chelseas, the Springfield. The Tauntons and some, and maybe even Boston. So that's part of what they use in the formula. You know, the state determines the formula. I'm not sure that there is anything other than appealing to our representatives. Because, you know, just going to Desi and saying, we think it's unfair. I'm not sure. How much traction that would get, because they would argue that, you know, the towns that I just named are in greater need than we are. I'm not saying that's not something you shouldn't do. I'm just not sure how successful it is, but. They do use a very complicated formula to calculate, but that's what it's based on.
Thank you.
Natasha?
So I, I know just to, I guess this is more of a commentary to, Mary and I had attended the recent. Town Budget Subcommittee and the, the conversation of amending the budget. And the, the fall came up and. Greg indicated that it might be amended, but departments should not be expecting any type of change. There were a couple of things that he indicated reasoning why. I guess there's other, a lot, he has a lot of contracts that need to be renewed. There was also something with the DPW and the service for Yale Harvey that potentially came in. Higher than expected, although that's still, I'm a little unresolved there because the town. Approved seventy, you know, a one-year extension. That should have been built into the FY twenty-three budget, but he's indicated that they might need an extra. Hundred and fifty thousand dollars on top of that for level service in FY twenty-three. So. And this is all with the understanding that Medicaid is, has come in tremendously higher than budgeted. In looking in FY twenty-four, it does look like they are increasing the budget. Forecast for the Medicaid reimbursement. I think it's up to ninety potentially, just because it will. It, it has to be, I guess, within a ten percent, was it? it, it has to be, I guess, within a 10%, was it Mary? Like a 10%? It can't be too under budgeted, like 10% over and a, right? Or the state will, will question that. But high, 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 high level, it looks like he has us penciled in with a 3% for FY24. But as we saw in the fall, we had penciled in 4%. And we saw, you know, where that, where that went. So I don't know if this means, you know, that the school department, and this is, this is part of processes to consider if the school would like to propose our own, you know, budget of what that might be. I just know these, some of these things have come up, you know, here and there. But there is always something to think about, but it has already gotten brought up that, that whatever monies, there was an increase that the town would be getting overall receipts minus the assessments. But it looks like the town has already preliminarily counted on that for other town needs that may not impact the school.
Right.
I wonder if, based on the things you're saying and the things Wayne was saying in really response tomorrow, if it would be helpful for us, like two months from now, to see if we can meet with Tracy and who does the whole budget thing for mask and sort of go over with her specifically Maynard situation and talk about strategy with regards to advocating to the state and strategy with regards to the town.
We did talk about budget education overall, like for the town, because like as we all know, the town is going to be having a lot of, you know, come in the spring, right? We were going to be asking our residents to pay a lot of money, right? So I think if there's an opportunity to address any particular type of need we feel, I think it'll be harder to do in the spring. You know, to be like, oh, on top of approving a new school, you know, we need that. So I think if there's a desire to go down or advocate for something, I think the fall now would be the time to really talk about what that we feel that, you know, is needed. To, you know, to, to, you know, either amend the budget for, but otherwise I think it will be a challenge. But educating, I think of all the needs, we talked about that in our, like, not just that, there's just a whole bunch, like the trash and all these other things that are coming down the pike. That there's no good way for Joe Q resident to kind of follow along, right? He's, these are all the things that we're going to be asking you to, all the projects, right? That they're kind of like all over, but not mapped out in a really good, like, two-year, three-year, five-year way.
Well, I go to meetings and I don't understand what DPW is doing with all their money.
The good news is that, good news is that Fowler has been paid off. So we just, we found that out. So Fowler is no longer on the debt services. Which is kind of cool to hear. So anyway, I don't know, Mary, if you have anything to add.
Yeah, so what, what came up was that the total that the town is getting in addition is $215,000. But and some of that obviously is the Chapter 70 addition and other, other revenue coming in. And it is disappointing that it's all accounted for. And Greg said it was because, like Natasha said, there are contracts that weren't ready to be negotiated at the time of town meeting. So they're being negotiated now. And so basically all that money is going to be absorbed, which is disappointing because Brian, you did such a great job this past couple of years with, with the negotiations and that. That I was hoping that we might be able to go back and just see if we can get any of it, or do we even want to do that, knowing that, you know, what's, what's coming down the pipe? But I would like to try. And to your point, Maro, we've tried a couple of different times. We, we went, I remember we went Sally Bouvier and I went all the way to Deval Patrick's office at one point with this whole presentation about how Maynard is so different than what we're represented. Also, we've had meetings with Kate Hogan to the same extent she understands, but so maybe, maybe Tracy can help us with, you know, with that, with how, how do we advocate for ourselves that we're not like us surrounding communities and, and that.
I think we need to, like, think about project-based kind of initiatives and, you know, because that's what the town has done really great with advocating to get, you know, earmarks into the budget. So we are looking at state budget, right? And so if there is particular thing that we feel that is a project-based, you know, like they had safety light, light installation or whatever it is, that's what I would like us to think. Or is there, you know, roof? I, I don't know what it, whatever we want to, like, think about, but that's, I think that the level I would like to start thinking about, how do we?
Not just money for the money, right?
We sort of did that last year. Mary and I met with Kate Hogan about looking at the budget requests when Brian made his request and then the town's total didn't come close to see if any of those things could be considered earmarks. And it looked like the literacy could be. But then when we got the literacy grant, that wasn't a priority.
They're thinking like the bleachers, that kind of stuff. Like, these are huge things that will cost our town a lot of, I mean, a million dollars, whatever, for bleachers that on top of a new school. It's, you know, it's, so that's what I would like to look at is maybe the capital, like, what are the school-specific stuff?
And if we get earmarks, I can't go to DPW.
That's right.
Well, they, they, right, yeah. I'm, I have my, I'm gonna remain silent on, on that. But I, but you have to be determined about their, that contract for Yale Harvey because Greg said he would get back with me because I, I attended all the meetings where they talked about it. It was $72,000 that the SLU board approved for the one-year extension. And then he brought it up like, oh, I didn't, I don't remember that. So so I, I was like, is it 150 over 72? And he's, he's like, I think it is, but he would, I haven't heard a reassurance or I haven't seen the contract or anything to that effect, understand.
So Wayne, I just had a question. One of the things was over $30 million to scale up college and career pathways. Could we get, or is that a grant type of thing that we could be applying for, for another pathway at the high school? Or is that a direction?
I'd have to investigate, Mary.
Okay, because if that is something, obviously, that would be phenomenal if we could incorporate some of that for our next career pathway.
Hillary, drop off.
Oh.
What did she?
Oh, yeah, maybe she, that's why she was.
Then, then I guess Elizabeth, since I haven't checked in with you.
Okay, so I guess first of all, thank you very much for the presentation and for answering those questions. I want to just clarify after that conversation that the school committee just had. Am I hearing correctly that even if we get money back for Chapter 70, that doesn't go directly to the schools, that goes to the town and they can decide not to give it to us? I did not know that. Thank you. But the other, the simple question I have for you, Wayne, is when will we know more about the circuit breaker special ed money? Is that coming in the fall, Ben? I know you're muted. Wayne, you're muted.
They didn't give a, a timeline on when that's going to be released. Unfortunately, it's not uncommon that we don't know till as late as September, October. So they didn't give a timeline. As you know, this, 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 this came out what, last week or week before last, so the circuit breaker breakout is, is probably a ways away.
And there's no deadline for that, that, they have to, there's no deadline they have to follow for that?
No.
Whatever they want, okay.
No, I wish there was.
Yeah.
We make our planning a lot easier.
Got it. Okay, thanks again.
Natasha?
Yeah, and the only other thing I wanted to just add, that did come up in our, our meeting, was about PEG, PEG access and which is for FY24, I think it's going to be a pretty significant conversation because Greg has as a very rough rough, had the same number budgeted for FY23. But I think what he said is actually the Verizon contract hasn't been finalized yet. And so it's really half of that is Comcast that we have with certainty to count on. And the other part, which is maybe like 182 or something to that effect, is Verizon. And so we may not, the worst case, we might get zero from them.
But we will get more, remember, because your point about how it expires November 30th of 2023, so.
Right, it contract goes until December. So that's the other part too, is that, because he was, you know, it's, their contract goes until December of '23. Verizon, so that's when it expires. It doesn't, it doesn't fund the full year. So for six months, it'll be full funding, but it's for six months, it's not. So just in thinking about planning, whatever we charge off, I think it's some staff we have to that in planning for FY24. Verizon funding will only be at this point for six months at the most. And Comcast is, is the part that's fully funded. So I just want to, we'll, we'll talk more in our budget subcommittee, but that is something to think about as it could be a larger chunk of money, maybe $90,000 that, you know, we will have to either advocate for or build somewhere or fund somehow or reassess. And then that's obviously not talking about the MTSS, you know, folks that we've also talked about. So anyway, just in, Wayne, let me know if you have any questions on that or.
Yeah, I wanted to, in your conversations with people at the town, Natasha, have you heard? Are they trying to renegotiate that with Verizon? And if they have, preliminarily, is Verizon open to, you know, renewing that? Or is Verizon saying they're walking away? What are you hearing?
Verizon, I guess the last contract, which was what, maybe like five years ago, Mary, was it? They, they only approved a five-year contract because I think at the time they gave some type of warning, like, hey, we might not be in the cable business anymore. You know, streaming and all these other things. And so right now there is ongoing negotiations through a legal.
A legal firm in New York, exactly.
Yeah, it's like a separate thing that hasn't been resolved yet, but it doesn't seem, all indications in that we should not count on the same level for Verizon. Comcast, I think, was a 10-year program or 10-year contract. So we may have like another five years on that or a couple more years to count on the Comcast funding, which is about, again, 182, I think, I forget which one.
Yep, no, you're right, 182. It's pretty much split down the middle.
Yeah, it was something, it was almost half and half. So we, we have with certainty Comcast. We have with less certainty Verizon after December of '23.
Greg thinks we'll get something, but he said, don't count on the full amount.
Worst case, which, you know, we might not get anything from Verizon, but that would still be, we wouldn't get, we wouldn't lose PEG access completely. It might be the Verizon portion or contribution would be reduced for FY24. So at the most, you know, half. So anyway, just, but there was cautionary language that it will, may not be the same service level that they would be committing to.
Or maybe also too, we can have a conversation with the town because they take a cut of that PEG money.
They take a cut, I asked Greg, which I haven't received yet, but I will provide an updated PEG allocation document. He had provided that maybe like two years ago and it will kind of help. They do take a small cut. It is less, I would say maybe 10%.
He said 90% of the money actually comes to the schools, that they only take 10%.
They do take a, a small amount, but we also provide a service to the town, you know, like meetings and whatever. So it's, we provide, we serve, we serve the town, not just for schools. So, I mean, it's a larger conversation. You know, how we want to, I think the town is totally vested. I didn't, there was no sense of like not wanting support it. You know, we, we heard the SLU board even last year, you know, advocate and students came out and talking about it when it was a discussion. So I just want to, that doesn't seem the tone of the conversation, but it will be a conversation piece coming up. And thank you for your presentation.
Yeah.
And I will say, I forgot to say before, Hillary, I would, I would like to do something with, with Tracy about how we can advocate better. I think that'd be great.
That would be great.
I think she was here. I saw her.
Yep, she's here.
Oh, there she is, okay.
But she's muted, so I don't know. I think Colleen, you need to unmute her.
Oh, my internet is not cooperating.
That's okay.
I got muted myself by accident too, sorry.
Um, yeah, I think she could help us with both the town side and the state side a little bit. But, okay. So is that a superintendent's report or do you have more, Brian?
You know, everything, given the time and the other information in the report, that's, you, you've probably already read it. If you have any questions, you know, send me an email. I'll be glad to respond, but I think we're good. Thank you.
For Chair's Report, um, next week, Brian and I are meeting with Greg and Jeff to start up those leadership meetings again for this year. And then we kind of need to talk about goals at some point. When we had our workshop with Tracy, she indicated that the school committee is supposed to come up with general ideas and directions to give to the superintendent to create superintendent and district goals. And so I think to some extent, we're probably going to be holding him up. We talked about them at our goal workshop last week. So we'll have to get that information to Brian. And then we've talked about our school committee goals. I'll work with Elizabeth. I'll check with Maro to see if she has input and then work with Elizabeth to create them into the SMART format. And then hopefully we can get those taken care of in September. We may need another workshop for just the school committee to work on that, but I'm not sure what people think about that. I don't want us to be doing goals in like December, though.
No, I, I think it'll be helpful because I, I know we talked, I thought it was a really great conversation and I, I would love, you know, input from Beth and, like, you know what I mean? For Maro as well and not everyone. Because I have, yeah, I took some, you know, notes. Maybe I'll send those to you, Hillary, because I know you had handwritten notes and you can kind of expand on where I might, whatever holes I might have missed. And then if that might help inform some of those, maybe like buckets of what we had talked about.
Yeah.
Okay.
Next week, you know, so we can always, maybe if we can grab a little time before or after that to talk about goals, that could be something.
Like before, after the workshop on Monday?
On, I have it on Tuesday.
23rd.
Yeah.
Tuesday.
Okay, um, yeah, you're right. Um, will we have time to post if we were to talk about goals?
Yeah, can we post a, we, we can't post on the, for Tuesday evening?
If I have it in the morning, like early in the morning.
Just like a workshop? Can we take like the last, the last agenda for the last one and?
Then we post?
Yeah, just.
So we have our workshop from 3:30 to 5:00? Like, would you want to do a 5:00 to 6:00 to go over goals again?
Yeah, I can't, I can't do that, but.
Okay.
Could you do it before?
Yep, I could do it before.
Oh, I don't know if I can.
I don't know if other people can.
I mean, we could also do, you know, a little before, a little after, like half an hour before, half an hour after.
Where the posts?
So, and like, kind of, like whoever can make each one, then there's.
The building closes at 6:00 if we're doing it at, um, one Tuesdays at, um, school.
Yeah, I can't do before.
All right, that might not be great then, if, if Mary can't do after and it. Once school starts up, the building's back open until 9:00.
Do we want to coordinate the email to come up with?
That'd be good, yeah.
And do we want Brian to come so we can sort of start talking about direction for the superintendent and the district goals to just give them like sort of a, to have an informal discussion about that instead of holding them up until we can talk about it at a school committee meeting?
I think that'd be great.
That's a great idea, yeah.
I don't want us to hold up him.
Right.
And I think that.
Yeah, no, I agree.
Right, I think it'd be, it should be a conversation and not just a directive.
Um, okay, so we can coordinate that later.
Right.
Um, subcommittee reports and members' comments. Let's start with Elizabeth.
I, I don't have anything this time. I'm looking forward to the meeting on Tuesday. Yeah, I think we're good.
Uh, Maro?
Um, the only thing that I wanted to bring up was about the online form or potential online forms, all those forms that parents, I call it the parent homework when the kids come home after the first day and have this huge packet of forms that parents have to fill out. It seems ridiculous that we have Aspen and why we can't have all of that stuff. It seems ridiculous that we have Aspen and why we can't have all of that stuff on there.
Colleen's raising her hand.
Colleen?
Yeah, Colleen.
That is actually part of online registration and they're already working on it. It just takes time to roll it out.
Okay, so.
It won't, it won't be for September, but for next year, yes.
Oh, for next year?
For next year, it won't be in time because there's a lot of, um, online registration takes a lot. And last year was all about getting Aspen up and running. So now they're into the online registration piece. So that is coming.
Okay, does that also include for new students?
Yes, new students for the registration, including forms for beginning of school, all that.
Okay, all right, great, that's.
I don't know how inclusive, but I do know they're trying to incorporate as much as possible.
Okay, good. That's all I have. Thank you.
Uh, Mary?
Um, yeah, so I had a couple of things and Chuck, you can probably potentially answer this. Have we received the Niasse report yet? I know in the presentation, oh, he might have to be muted, I mean, unmuted, no, no. We haven't, we still haven't, huh? Have they given any kind of timeline or whenever it happens?
Uh, I, I'll make an inquiry.
Yeah, it's, I mean, it would be great if we could kick the year off really, trying to work on that. So if you can update us on that, that'd be great. And the, the MSBA, the, the committee, we had really good representation on the twenty-eighth of July. We went out to visit the Ludlow Elementary School, a lot of great feedback on that too. So that was the second field trip that we took for, to really figure out, hone in what we want the new Green Meadow to look like.
Field trips? That sounds like fun.
You could have come. It's like an hour and a half away. But it was good. It was, and I was really happy with, with how many people that we had that showed up. So, and both Rob and Karen were there too, which was really, really important. So, and Brian, I'd received this, and I'm hoping that this isn't what went to parents. I had received something just today from Whitson's. I think it's like, it's a generic thing. And I didn't know if that went to all the parents because it was very confusing if so. Did, am I?
I'm not sure. I haven't received any information.
Okay, I wonder, because obviously what's being sent out is that it's, it's all free this year. But the Whitsons said, check with your schools to see if it's free. So it kind of sends a mixed message. And like I say, so hopefully that, I didn't receive, did anybody else get it? Email from Whitson's? Oh, interesting. Then I'm thinking that it didn't go to the parents, so that's an okay thing.
I can tell you, Mary, that in the past, so I know we're at a district schools, but they don't always fund us and I.
Oh, I wonder if that's why it's like that.
So I, I think it depends if, if there's a level of commitment to whatever the food service program, the school.
It doesn't participate either.
Right, yeah. Many schools can't serve meals free to everyone anymore. So maybe that's, that's where it's, it's coming from.
I was very disappointed that, you know, some out-of-district schools for kids who are, you know, not by, there by choice had to pay for lunches still when, you know, their public schools were benefiting from it.
Right, that's unfortunate. I didn't realize that. So, okay, so I'm going to figure that that didn't go out to the parents to send a mixed, mixed message. And the last thing was, and I should have brought it up last, last meeting, but we were all so tired that, and I'm probably, Colleen might be the only one that knew Herb since, Herb, maybe Mauro too, but I don't know. Herb was a lifelong resident of Maynard and he just passed away within the last, the last month. He was a teacher, his whole, almost his whole career was spent teaching in Maynard. He was also the head of the union for decades, actually, well, Chuck might not know him either. And he was the high school's first girls' track coach and coached them for many years. And after he retired, he still volunteered with the girls' soccer team. So I just, he was also a founding member of the Maynard High School Athletic Hall of Fame. So I just wanted to put that shout out to his family because he will, he is definitely missed. It was one of those that you were shocked to, to hear that he passed away, but I just wanted to share that. So that's it.
Thank you.
Yeah, it was sad. It was very sad, yeah.
Um, Natasha?
I, I gave the budget pretty much update earlier, but the only thing is, Wayne, like, since you and Brian are back, I, I was talking to Mary when we had our town budget. I'll, maybe we should, you know, put something on as a standing meeting so we can connect a little bit more and get us established. And then, because I want us to finalize the budget calendar a little bit. I know we had a rough draft that was kind of put over and, and I think, Brian, you were at some point going to just check with your admin team. There was some, some things in the beginning just to find like what your date is and we can have a working document that will be tweaked during the year. One of the things that we, we haven't had the opportunity to do, and I really want to make sure we focus on, is get feedback from the school councils. So that, whatever their recommendations are for, for, I'd like to make sure that we, we have a dedicated place for, for that as part of either their reporting out with their school improvement plan, which maybe includes budgetary requests or whatever. They're supposed to report at any way to us. Most often, it, it has budget implications, so be great to get that. So anyway, so more to come. Well, offline, we'll talk about when we want to regroup and just maybe put a standing meeting on the calendar. You know, maybe every two weeks and if we, we need to cancel or something, we can. Um, and I think the only other thing was I had, was very excited to see the, the virtual meetings for the new high school principals that are being established as a virtual meeting on the, on the twenty-second at night. And then that's in-person on twenty-third. So I tried to circulate that everywhere because I really, you know, want to make sure that that, there's participation from the community. And I, I had gotten, someone had, was commenting, actually a couple of people commented that there's maybe some lack of communication from Green Meadow about, it was, so it was totally unrelated to what I was sharing. But either some families maybe aren't getting, they don't have school supply list or not knowing who their teachers were. I know the other schools have things posted. I, I've saw, you know, Principal Barth, he has a dedicate. I haven't seen a communication from Green Meadow, you know, for August coming out yet. So if, just want to make sure that by this point, I'm hoping that families have all their needs, you know, so they can go get stuff for their students. But is there a way, because I didn't see on their website, they don't have lists posted. And, and I feel like this is a reoccurring, and I know it's teacher-driven, but there has to be some basic stuff that, you know, but by the time they wait till the last minute, like everything's gone or, you know, it's, it's a little frustrating. You want kids to be excited to come back to school with other new stuff, so.
Sorry.
No, I'll just say if you could follow up with, with Rob and Karen on that, just from feedback that I received. And then the others, the other, I just kind of alluded to earlier, but I had also gotten feedback about confusion about Fridays and who was, who was in school or who was available in the schools from a leadership perspective. It sounded like Chuck was saying that there were some variations this summer to have some Fridays off for, for whatever reason. But I just want to make sure when those happen, if we could communicate, like, I don't know if we want to have summer office hours, you know, or whatever that might be so that we can kind of, you know, direct people to, I think people just assume it's just regular school hours every day, Monday through Friday and that they stop by, they might get a little, you know, why isn't someone here or whatever. So anyway, just some other feedback that passed along.
Okay, um, for the minutes, um, is everybody good with them, with these small edits that are on them?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay, so without objection, I move to approve the minutes from four twenty-eight, twenty-two, four seven twenty-two and three fifteen twenty-two. Okay, great. Um, let me see.
I will be abstaining from warrant twenty-three zero zero seven.
Okay, um, so without objection, I move to approve warrants twenty-two fifty-six, twenty-two fifty-seven, twenty-two fifty-eight, twenty-two fifty-nine, twenty-two sixty, twenty-three zero zero zero, twenty-three oh oh one, twenty-three oh oh two, twenty-three oh oh three, twenty-three oh oh four, twenty-three oh oh five and twenty-three oh oh six. Okay, so those are approved and then, um, motion to approve warrant twenty-three oh oh seven?
Second.
Uh, discussion? Okay, roll call, Mauro?
Yes.
Mary?
Yes.
Elizabeth?
Yes.
Natasha?
Yeah, oh, I'm saying, sorry.
Um, and I'm a yes.
Yeah.
Okay, um, I think we're all set.
Policy, I don't know, question or just a, you know, it came up months ago before the flag policy. I didn't know if that could be something that you could get an update on or if there would be a discussion. I know that with the judicial ruling, there was some question about whether our policy, you know, is compliant or not. And before we are reactive to another future situation that comes into play, it'd be really great to have some official guidance or discussion around that, that, or some legal guidance that informs. What is?
Looked into that previously, right? Do we need to, do, do you remember if we have to change something in our, our policy or is our?
Yeah, I think Chuck, you were working on that, right?
Yes, uh, we had a request to fly a flag under the American flag. And based on the recent ruling in Boston, we reached out to our council. And the recommendation was to fly nothing under the American flag. Period.
So do we have a policy that says that or do we need one?
I would, I would like to see if we, because the town approved an amended policy. And so I, I want to make sure that our policy isn't so, and I, I think they base it on updates from the judicial ruling. So I think it's natural that someone would question why can one and not the other. So I just want to make sure. I think they have, it was worded, I'll have to dig it out, but they fly the POW. It was a POW, right? So I want to make sure that whatever language, if we need to amend our policy, that it, if we're not totally off-base or different or if there's an explanation of why we need to be different, that that's just understood or clarified, you know, because we're a school and, you know, those are, you know, state, you know, the post office and whatever those are, I think they're required by law in some ways. I just want to make sure that we're not faced with this contentious situation in a reactive way. Because we might get questioned again about why this flag is flying or why is this in a classroom or something to that effect and.
I don't think we currently have a written policy. When I looked into it, I believe we didn't have a policy that specifically addressed it, so it would be a new policy.
We have a flag policy. I think it's a very, like some of the other ones, I think it's a very flat.
Yeah, I think it's like slightly off. Oh, Brian?
Yeah, I'll re, I'll revisit it with Sarah. I know that at the time, her recommendation was fly the American flag and only the American flag, period. That was not, that did not become our policy. That was just legal recommendation at the time for that situation. I'll check with Greg on what the town's using as a revised policy as well and we'll bring it to the policy subcommittee.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Yep.
And then just also, there were some, no, there was also some people to the recreation committee that got appointed. Dan Nash was appointed to the committee the other night at the SLUT board meeting and Drew Holmes. I think was also, Jim Hines stepped away. So they had to, so I just wanted to share because that, you know, impacts our school and our relationships. And so those are some new, new bodies and new places that will work with us.
And they're, they're also on the fields committee.
Yeah, that's why I thought it would be, yeah, yeah. So, so it seems like there's just a lot of like, which is good.
Which is good.
Yeah.
And we now have a liaison to the recreation committee.
Yes.
Okay, do you have a motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn.
Second.
Um, okay, roll call, Mauro?
Yes.
Mary?
Yes.
Elizabeth?
Yes.
Natasha?
Yes.
And I'm a yes.
Good night.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Bye.
Good night.